Well, the bewitching hour is upon us. So we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of Committee of the Whole Meeting and Budget, beginning our budget presentations. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Klecker.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
I think he's in the building.
Chairman Eilert.
Here.
We do have a quorum present. So, Mr. Newfeld?
Good afternoon. Scott Newfeld with the Budget Office. Before we get started with today's agenda, I wanted to remind the Board that Robin passed out the revisit list. And it has RERs and CIPs on it. And then, on the last page, there is room for additional items. And I would just remind the Board that we use this to focus our follow-up meetings after we review departmental budgets. And this is a mechanism for the Board to decide what they want to focus on for further discussion at that point. And so typically, what we ask the Board to do is to just make notes as we go through the department interactions and just make note of things that you maybe want to discuss further later on. And obviously, this list are things that are either funded or not funded, that were asked for, additional resources, or CIPs for departments. But on that last page, if there's other topics that you want to revisit and have focused discussion when we get to the budget deliberations, that's the purpose of this list, is to just help build those agendas at those last meetings.
Mr. Newfeld, let me interject. I should have said something for those who are viewing or listening to these deliberations for the first time. The Committee of the Whole, the purpose of the Committee of the Whole Meeting is to review the county manager's recommended budget. And that's an opportunity for discussion, for questions. We do not make any final determinations as a result of the Committee of the Whole after the entire county budget recommendation has been reviewed. Then we do, at a regular business meeting, make a budget, final budget recommendation. So that's to come yet, in when, late May or June, as I recall.
Yeah, I think we're in June on that, where the Board makes a direction for a maximum published budget amount that then leads into the public hearing.
Yeah. And just as a reminder for Commissioners, again, if there is a disagreement or a question about a particular department's budget or a personnel request, again, we don't make a decision at this time, but mark your data sheet for a future review at the time when we do collectively make all those decisions, so.
Thank you. I'll turn your attention real quick to the agenda. As you can see, thematically, we are starting with Public Safety, Judicial and Emergency Services. And then later, we will be reviewing some infrastructure departments, planning, contractor licensing, public works and stormwater. So we have a pretty good list of Public Safety, Judicial and Emergency Services to start with. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Maury, who's got an overview slide, and then we'll get to Steve and then Tom Dugan from the Budget Office to go through the remaining slides.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. And I believe that's Slide number six.
So again, thank you, Maury Thompson, Acting Deputy County Manager. I'm pleased to provide this overview slide, if you will, for our Public Safety, Judicial and Emergency Services offices and departments today. This has meant, of course, not to be an all-inclusive list, but some highlights of accomplishments, looking back over the past year, and some challenges, quite frankly, looking forward. Would make one caveat to this slide. You will hear later from the Sheriff's Office, who will touch on two of the items that we would have considered putting on this slide, and that's drug activity, and then ADP, Average Daily Population in our jails. So again, Sheriff will touch on those items. But again, looking at the list before you, really three accomplishments here and two challenges looking ahead. First is NISH, and again, I know this body is well aware of that. It brought before you on a number of times over the past year or so for your approval. Pleased to report to this body that that project continues to advance quite nicely. For those who are listening and may not be familiar, NISH is a records management system for all law enforcement in Johnson County. So unifying that records management system, I say "all" law enforcement, including the district attorney, the court system, and even expanding already to school districts and others in Johnson County. So very pleased with the progress of that. And a special thank you to our GIMS department for their work in making that a reality for us. Speaking of GIMS, the next bullet talks about the consolidation or coordination of IT services. Again, something very important to this body, which has occurred over the past year or so. Moving that out of MEDACT, which provided their own, and consolidating that into the GIMS system. So continuing to bolster our public safety IT network there. Jumping then down to the bottom, following along in accomplishments, GIMS and Corrections are implementing Kiosk, which is an opportunity to automate our population management system. And you may hear more about them as they present their budget this afternoon. However, just note that that is a way to further drive efficiencies and effectiveness in the correction system. So pleased with that work as well. Looking ahead to challenges, again, here we do touch on the average daily population. Again, looking back since 2014, that has increased by more than 10%. So those numbers are going up. And finally, something you may have heard a bit about, but we'll hear more about in the months and year ahead, is our need for juvenile crisis services here in Johnson County. Looking at how we can continue to partner with the Mental Health Center, Corrections, the court system, nonprofits in the state to address the array of juvenile services needed for those, touching both the mental health and juvenile justice systems. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Budget Staff.
Again, I'm Tom Dugan with Budget and Financial Planning. I'm joined by Whitney Race.
Can you speak into the mic? Yeah, I need to get a little closer.
I'm joined by Whitney Race and Steve Howe from the District Attorney's Office. And Steve's going to kick it off and talk about what's going on at the DA's office and what things are impacting their business currently.
As indicated in the bullet points, the number of filings have gone up in the district court on criminal filings, juvenile and criminal courts.
Are you on?
Gotcha. Hey, I'll start over. How's that? Our criminal filings have continued to rise. You know, one of the things that we talked about a couple of years ago was that during the recession, the level of crime actually went down, which was kind of an anomaly. Well, we are here to report that's no longer the case, that crime has been on the uptick, and it has been a challenge to both my office and law enforcement. The other issue related to crimes is, you know, white collar, identity theft, fraud types of cases, of course, are really the biggest significant increase that we've seen. And I say this a lot, and when I speak in public settings, in just real basic terms, we got stuff and people want our stuff. And that's basically what we deal with, is if they have our money, we have property, and people come and want to take it, whether through the Internet or through just actual grabbing onto something that belongs to another individual. And so that's the vast majority of the cases we deal with. One of the trends that I don't have in this bullet point that is continually to concern the Sheriff, the Chiefs of Police, and myself, is the number of drug ripoff violent crimes that we're seeing. And you saw an article, or a story in the media about, that it doesn't just touch on Johnson County, but touching on the entire metropolitan area. And what I mean by drug ripoffs is, either the drug dealer's going to rip off the person who's coming to buy the drugs, or the person who is buying the drugs decides to rip off the drug dealer. And the problem is, when you do that, you bring weapons with you. And that usually means that then people get hurt. And that has increased substantially here in Johnson County, and it is a concern of law enforcement. And hopefully, we can find a way to stem the tide on that area. The last thing, and this will directly relate to the request that I'm making, is the growth of body cameras with law enforcement. Not all law enforcement agencies have body cameras. And as I'm going to talk about in my request, within the next year to 18 months, every single law enforcement agency in Johnson County's going to have body cameras. And I'll talk about how that impacts my office here a little bit later.
Okay. Just a couple of quick budget notes. The district attorney's total published budget, excluding cost allocation or risk management, is roughly $9.53 million, with $8.75 million of that being local tax support. They also have one additional position that is included in the proposed budget, and that has a lot to do with what Steve just talked about. The next page is their request for additional resources. There were two that were included in the proposed budget, two that were not included at this time. One is a clerk to help address processing digital evidence. A lot of that has to do with those additional videos from the body cameras. And they also have an increase in their commodities and contractual services. That's just an increase in the cost of doing business for them. They actually came back at the end of last year, needing to use a little bit of reserves for those things. So this is just us making up for those additional costs. The two positions that were not included were one warrant assistant and one office personnel. Both were considered needs, but the first position the clerk took was considered a critical need. Do you have anything to add on that?
Not right now.
Okay. And then the...
One, excuse me, Mr. Allen.
I've got to ask you a question. Steve, on the additional personnel for the traffic unit, is there a possibility of increasing a fee? I know the state takes most of the revenue, I believe, from that operation, but is there a possibility of increasing the processing fee or administration costs for the ticket to fund that?
We are limited in how we do that through the ticket process. We could explore that opportunity. But, you know, the concern we have is, you keep dinging people with more and more money on fees and court costs, and at some point in time, it becomes more than the actual ticket that costs you. So that is a potential. That's something that we would have to work out with the courts, to see if that's something that's doable and, I guess, feasible, as well as equitable for the people that get these tickets.
Okay. Thank you. And I do understand what both sides of that, so thank you.
Mr. Klecker, do you have a question?
Steve, kind of as a follow-up, and very similar to what Jim is saying, is the question I would have relative to the warrant assistant and office professional. If those positions become revenue neutral, I mean, if there's enough revenue that's generated to offset that, it seems like to me it's no-brainer, go ahead and do it. So, and so that's, you know, just adding to the budget, I understand that's where the challenge is. But I think if there's rationality the other way, as far as what type of revenue as a result of that position being in there, that may have a different take on it.
And without being able to look back at my notes, I recall that there's some limitations by state laws or requirements as to what we can assess as far as cost on those tickets locally. But I would be happy to explore that.
Can I take it a step further? Is that it's not necessarily just on the program fee of the service fee, but by following through with the judicial process there, does that, in fact, by dealing with more problems, does it help at least revenue come in from that, from the judicial process? That would help. So it's not just the first level there.
Right.
As you go down the line, does it have an impact on fines, fees, whatever it may be?
And I'll explore that. I can't tell you right here and now what options we have available. The reason why we put that request in for that position was, for a while, the Highway Patrol wasn't patrolling in Johnson County because of their shortfalls in staff.
Yeah.
Well, they're back in town. And that means that they are issuing more tickets, and so we're starting to see that increase rolling in. So, but I will...
You see where I'm coming down to?
On behalf of both of you...
And I'm not out there to go charge the world on everything, but just by increasing the level of enforcement, it has a tendency to bring those fines that are owed to us or not.
Right. And I will look into that and get back with both of you and let you know what...
Thank you.
Mr. Dugan?
Well, I'd say maybe for staff, that we make an emphasis on that in our legislative platform for next year, that we look at maybe a more equitable share of the fees and that sort of thing. So it's not necessarily that we have to raise fees, but that we get an equitable portion from the state.
And that's something that our Association, the Kansas County and District Attorneys Association, has actually reached out to legal aid and other groups about maybe assessing as part of a court cost, a, you know, 10 cents per court case that could be divvied up between the two parties to help process some of that legal expertise through the criminal system. So we're looking into those types of things, but as you know, anytime you're dealing with the legislature, it's not necessarily a fast or efficient way of going through the process.
Well, they're also looking for, I think, more money somewhere.
Right. And there's limited money, and I think everybody is very cautious about assessing more fees and cost on many times people who can't afford to pay to start with. And so you may assess the cost. It's kind of like lab fees. You know, they assessed all these lab fees to help our crime lab. Well, most of these people can't pay those fees. And so it looks good, but the reality is actually getting money to come back in is pretty slow.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Continue.
The only last thing I had, I wanted to show some trends, and this is really what Steve was talking about a moment ago, about the crime continuing to trend back up. The chart on the left, as you look at it, is all of the case filings for the last five years for juvenile offenders.
Excuse me. When you're looking that direction, you lose the mic, and I lose you then.
Got you. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Here we go.
I was just pointing out that crimes continue to trend back up. That's really what Steve had pointed out a few minutes ago. And it's up about, I think, 6% over the last four years, 2% over the last five. And that was something to point out, just because it had been dropping for a long period of time before that, it is no longer dropping. And we would stand for any other questions that you might have.
Steve, did you have any other comments?
Yeah.
I was going to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
About the body cam. And this is not in your shop, but the two additional crime lab folks for DNA.
Sure. I can address my position in regards to the body cams. Just to kind of give you a little bit more background about why that's having a direct impact on us. So we file typically between 6,500 and 7,000 cases a year, domestic violence, adult and juvenile. And in those cases, we have a statutory obligation to provide complete discovery. All the evidence that we have, we have to turn that over to the defense, so they have an opportunity to defend that and assist their client. We also have an ethical duty to make sure that that is accomplished as well under the Supreme Court rules. Body camera footage is evidence, and sometimes the best evidence. And so it becomes important for us, if body cameras are being worn, to be able to transfer that information to the defense, so they can use that in evaluating their cases and helping their clients. What has happened is, these body cameras are really high-definition systems. Their cameras are amazing, but the problem with that is, those high-definition cameras are huge files. And because they're huge files, being able to download and process those is challenging. And let me give you an example. Typically, the average is 15 gigs is what one of those files is. And for our office, if we have a computer, and we actually have two, that basically what they do is they download the information of these cameras to copy. It takes four hours for us to do that. And we have worked with GIMS and made sure that we have an open pipeline of data to get into our computers, but our computers can only go so fast. And we've actually burned up some Blu-rays, because that's all they do is copy. And so we are spending a ton of time doing this. We are, I checked with the head of our paralegal department, who's in charge of this, we are, we have 100 files that we are behind on. And we are running that way. And she is trying to process it, and I've got my existing staff trying to process it, and they just can't keep up. The concern I have is, not all the departments have their body cameras up and running. Chiefly, the biggest department in the county, Overland Park, is supposed to, by the end of the year, go onboard. If they go onboard and I don't have this position, I'm going to get overwhelmed. Because in most instances, you don't just have one body camera when you have a call. You have multiple officers there, you have their car cameras. We've got to download all that ethically to provide that to the defense. And I don't think, once all these departments go online, we're going to be able to keep up. And I equated it to this. We file 6,500 cases, so if you have one officer for each case, which we know that doesn't happen, and it takes four hours to download his body camera, that is 26,000 hours. An employee working full-time each year has 2,080 hours a year. And I would agree, if you have one employee, we'll probably end up having three computers sitting there and just burn away constantly. So even if we have this person, I have concerns. But I think we can at least evaluate where we're at the next coming budget. I know Sedgwick County DA's office asked for three staff and got it, because they were feeling the pinch too, and we're the two biggest offices in the state. So my concern is doing my job and doing my ethical duty to get this stuff accomplished. I don't want to go too far above board. I want to evaluate this. The other thing, the reason why I'm being measured about this, is I know GIMS, once they get the NISH system onboard, I have had assurances from Tim, that the next big project is cloud-based discovery. But it's going to take some time to do that and put the parameters in place. So we've got to get NISH done, which hopefully, late this year, early next year, then get cloud-based discovery and get that onboard. But even if we get cloud-based discovery, I've got to make certain copies, I've got to redact copies. I'm going to need this person at the very least, just to keep up as we move forward. So that's the reason for my concern. We don't want to get in a quandary where we have a case and we're not providing full and complete discovery, because we can't get that information out the door. So that's the reason for my request. I hope you consider it an appropriate request and would agree to fund it. And in regards to other services, I want to just briefly tell you what these services are related to. Transcription services. If we have witnesses testify, and then they're going to testify in a subsequent hearing, we need to give them their transcript, so they can be prepared to take a look at their previous testimony. That just goes up, and there's nothing we can do about it. Legal services. One of the big things is, the Kansas Supreme Court has made it far more extensive our notice requirements on child in need of care cases. It creates a lot of effort and money to do proper notice under their rules. And so that has driven costs, and is the reason why we're over on those types of legal services. Witness fees, you know, that goes up and down depending on the case you're trying that year. If you need an expert, because there's a mental disease and defect defense, I'm going to have to hire an expert to combat that type of situation, or other potential experts in certain fields. And that varies, but as we see, we are now consistently going over. And what we have done and worked with the Budget Office is, we've been moving money around, and the Jamaican's meet, last year was the first year where we just couldn't even do that. We had gotten pushed in every single area. And Whitney does a great job of that, but we just ran out of money. And it wasn't because we were spending money willy-nilly, we just, in order to get these cases to completion and to disposition, we just had to spend the money to get it done. So that's why we made the request last year. And instead of continually doing that, we're like, you know, we haven't increased the amount in our budget for a long time, and the cost of business has just gone up, we need to ask for this request. So I summarized everything, and then you wanted me to talk, Chairman.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, make a comment about the, I think the budget includes two positions for the crime lab, primarily on DNA. Could you enlighten us on how that area of discovery or prosecution is going?
As you know, if you watch TV, it's a big part of the criminal justice system. Not quite, doesn't operate quite like what you see on TV, but it is essential to us gaining good dispositions and effecting justice. And I can tell you that, I mean, we have to prioritize our cases in order for the lab to get the stuff done we need for our cases. So basically, what we're saying is, here's our top 10 list. We need these cases done ahead of everything else, because we've got court dates coming up, and the lab is having to prioritize to get the job done. I will tell you, from talking to juries and my staff talking to juries, they expect us to have that type of evidence. And if we don't get the job done, that's held against the state, and it could impact our ability to get good dispositions for justice. I will tell you, the lab is critical for us doing our job, and I'm a big proponent of it. I think it's probably the most effective way for us to see good dispositions and hold people accountable for committing crimes is through the crime lab. You may not know this, but we probably got one of the top 10% labs in the country. And they do great work, and we're lucky to have them. And I want them to continue to be able to provide that service that we need for both law enforcement and our office. And so I think it's a critical, critical service for us to see the final result, which is justice for the people of Johnson County.
I should clarify, those two positions are not in your budget. They're in the Sheriff's budget, but you do rely upon their activity.
Absolutely. They're critical.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, I very much appreciate your comments about technology. It can be the greatest benefit or the greatest bane to your existence.
Absolutely.
I get that. I was wondering, and you may not have it now, but as the budget process proceeds, I was looking at the district court filings over the last 10 years, and noticed that there's been a fairly significant drop, about 15%, 17% over the last 10 years. And you're right, there has been for criminal cases, an uptick. So I was going to ask you, and also maybe Mr. Thompson, about the daily population has increased over 10% since '14. But I was wondering, long-term, what that looks like, and what the staffing changes have been? Because there have been some technologies, you know, the NISH has hopefully been a benefit, but the body cameras may be a benefit to justice and fairness, but in terms of administration, it sounds like it's a challenge. Because my ultimate question is, you're asking for one position, which is fair, given your arguments about the impact of body cameras. How are you going to measure success? Because what I thought I heard you saying is, and all due respect, running three screens at the same time, that my quick calculation gets to maybe 10% of the total volume, that, I mean, that's just not manageable. So will you be back, arguably, and I'm not suggesting this, but arguably back saying, "Well, Overland Park and whoever else, once they're added on in the next three or four years, this one clerk should be 50 clerks." And is that the appropriate approach to dealing with that technological change? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. And that's why I'm only asking for one, because the timing of this, I'm hopeful that when NISH is fully implemented by the end of the year or early next year, that GIMS will be able to roll over and put their priority one to the cloud-based technology. And if we can do that, we can lessen the blow of this. And let me just explain cloud-based discovery. What would happen is, instead of us having to make all these copies, instead, we would make those copies available in the cloud, provide security access to the defense attorneys who would be able to log in and view those, without us having to make all those copies. And so I have a lot of faith that we're going to get there, and get there in a timely manner. And that's why I've got this measured approach, is we'll be able to manage it if we get that cloud-based system in place. And I think GIMS will get it done.
And that's a fair response. I would be interested, though, in how we're going to measure success. And I hope that GIMS can pull the magic out. But if I could see that long-term trend and the staffing, I would appreciate that.
Well, I can tell you how I'd measure success, which is, I don't have a backlog in making those copies. Instead of having 100 videos sitting there, that's how I'm going to measure success, because my duty and my obligation as representing the state of Kansas is to turn that stuff over in a timely manner to the defense. If I'm having to wait six, eight months to get something to somebody, I got a problem.
Yeah.
And that's how I'm going to measure success.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, anything else?
I have nothing further.
All right, you can go home.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve, thanks, thanks for those comments, appreciate it.
Okay, we have the court administrator, Catherine Stocks, Laura Brewer, who is the court services director, and Judge Kelly Ryan with us as well. And I'm just going to, I'm not sure who's going to take the wheel for you folks, but just going to have them start out talking about what is happening at district courts and some key points for them as well.
I'll start off, I am Kelly Ryan, I'm the chief judge since January, so thank you for all of you being so kind and open to helping me learn the ropes, and learn the rope of the budget, which is probably the most important point of all.
Yeah, make sure that's close. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a green light?
Green.
There it is.
There you go.
Now, can you hear me?
I hate to be one of these.
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to tell you, we have not only a new chief judge, but we also will have a new district court clerk, starting on Monday, Lisa Wilson, who was just chosen here recently. She comes to us with approximately 20 years of experience, she was, we had applicants from literally across the nation. And we're very excited about her starting and helping us with both electronic filing, everything that's involved in that, as well as our move over to the new courthouse as we plan for that. Since the last time we were here in the budget, this isn't directly on budget, but so that you know, we have two new district court magistrate judges, Judge Bob Scott and Jennifer Ashford. And that just reminds me of, again, a thanks to you for the supplement that you are able to provide for our district magistrate judges, because as you may notice, we have difficulties with people 60 miles to our west in understanding that we have some salary constraints in the district courts.
Well, we heard this morning, at least for court employees, there may be a 5% salary increase in the budget that's before the legislature, so not the judges.
Judges only got two.
Well, and that's aside from the judges of being 2%. That's not, the 5% is, we're trying to get that word out to everyone amongst our staff because there's a pool of money. And that 5% is the amount of money over the past budget, but that is also going to be distributed out to those people, according to the market surveys that we have done, how far underwater they are. And those are primarily court clerks and court service officers. So they may get a, not a disproportionate, but more funds out of that will go towards them to bring them somewhat up to level.
I see.
None of this covers the request, we're about $14 million short of what we had requested to bring everyone up to market, which we always repeatedly point out, that as Johnson County does with its employees, it's all based on the evidence, and despite all that, other reasons come into play, but...
That's 14 million for Johnson County?
No. For the state.
Okay.
Yeah, it's approximately $7 million is what's been added to the budget for now, all state employees, including the judicial branch judges and non-judicial staff.
Judge, you have that number for Johnson County? If the state fully funded, do you know what that would be?
The Office of Judicial Administration has not released that because the pool just came out, and it's an up-down vote before the House and Senate. And until the governor signs it, we won't even know exactly how much, but this is only for state employees. Our clerks and CSO ones are, on average, 22% below market. So that 5% of the pool, that very small pool, is going to probably go to them the most, but we can let you know, we're hoping, I mean, right now, we have people at 11:50 an hour, so...
So basically, it's not 5% across the board?
No, it's not. It's all rated based on how under-market you are, that's why it's hard to say. So as soon as we have that, we will distribute it out.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
That was tying into one of my next points was, because as state employees, the bulk of our staff, both with the clerk's office and with the chief, with the court service officers, it's not only just the pay for those people who are working, but it's to attract people when spots come open, and that's a continuing issue, and I know that Laura will talk about that some more. We do have an increase, as District Attorney Howe pointed out, increase in criminal cases, not only in filings, and I think the important point is, that's below the surface, is that you understand that these are, maybe in numbers, a little bit more, 6% more in the past year, but in the complexity of these cases. We have now two pending capital murder cases in our courts here. Those are highly intensive, both personnel-wise and time-wise. Generally, a capital case is going to take two to three years to work its way through district court, let alone before it goes any further than that. But we are also, I'll always take the chance to highlight that we have the first and only Veterans Treatment Court in the state of Kansas, and we, Judge McCarthy is leading that now for a year and a half. We're going to have another three members graduate, Chairman Ayler is going to speak at that graduation next week for us. But that is a hallmark in the state and in the region, really, for us to be doing that. We are also looking at other specialty courts, whether that be drug courts, DUI courts. The specialty courts have a proven track record of being able to take persons that are in the judicial, the criminal system, and reduce that recidivism rate, get them out successfully. And as with Veterans Treatment Court, there's nothing that's higher in their success rates than veterans, when they're coming out at over 90%, not reoffending within two years after completing their, completing our program. In addition to a lot of time that we're taking with county staff, and the wonderful job that they continue to do to help us in making the plans for the move to the new courthouse, but we're also working with the sheriff's office in trying to look forward, maybe not be able to go out 75 years, but at least to look forward, and what we can do to take advantage of better space and better technology to save money. As has always been the case, whether electronic or video appearances can be more readily used to eliminate some of those costs of transporting prisoners back and forth, which on Thursdays, you don't ever get that benefit because you're here working in this building, but if you ever have a chance on a Thursday, come over and see the, at least two busloads of inmates that come through the courthouse, in addition to all the other people on a Thursday, you'll see where the time and expense is going to for that, those costs. We are also part of the, in our working with gyms, the rest of the state, where some people like to say that we're kind of the island, the rest of the state of Kansas is undergoing a transformation from their electronic filing, which they have just really come up to where we've been for 10 years, with our electronic filing, but made it mandatory statewide, and there is a new system, a court case management system project, and it's taking a four-year span to implement throughout the state. But we're required also, even though we're in a separate system, we have to make sure that we integrate and are compliant with those other systems to report all the statistics, to keep all of our management of court cases, so we are complying with the Supreme Court mandates that we have to follow. So that's something that we're always working on, and we'll be working to integrate that with the state system through gyms. I was going to turn it over, and our court administrator, Catherine Stocks, wanted to point out a few of our, as we're going forward, some of our projects as well.
Okay.
So briefly, some of the things that don't get quantified, because we aren't there yet. We have worked with the National Center for State Courts, and while Johnson County has your strategic plan, the court does not have its own specific strategic plan. And we're in the process of getting a grant for $55,000 from the State Justice Institute to create a 2019 to 2021 strategic plan that will prepare us for the move across the street. What training do we need to have, what processes can we improve, how can we improve access to justice to the individuals coming to the new courthouse? And it's a really exciting process, because we're going to rely on our county friends as well to be a part of this, so we can talk about how we can improve. And like the chief judge mentioned, working with the sheriff's office about improving access via video. We also are working on the automation of our jury processes. The new system that's coming in statewide has a state-of-the-art jury portal, and we now have our questionnaires online. We had a successful launch earlier this year out to our next set of potential jurors, and we sent a postcard instead of the letter. So we saved on postage, envelopes, all the paper, the staff time for folding, and our response rate has been fantastic. We've only had a few people that have requested a paper copy. We had a significantly higher success rate in return of information, people going in online than we would by paper. We now have automated data tracking related to that, so we can keep better records and eliminating manual processes. So these are just some of the things we're working on. We're also working on continued automation of the help center, just as you saw the idea of automation within the adult residential center. Well, we also want to improve our processes to try to eliminate how much paper individuals coming into the courthouse for help are using. And we're working with the state as a whole to identify forms that they can use as well, fillable PDFs, ADA accessible items, things where people can pull it up on their tablet or their phone and start filling it out, the reality of how people access information. And all of those ideas and realistic timelines are hopefully going to be included in that three-year plan, so this is all really exciting.
So specifically as to your budget, who's going to carry that role?
A couple of quick things on the budget. They have a $5.94 million total published budget, excluding cost allocation and risk management. You will notice that their budgeted FTEs drops quite a bit. That drops for a couple of reasons. First, we eliminated a number of positions that had funding previously, and that funding was gone, so the positions went away. We also had misdemeanor-intensive supervision, moved from district courts to the corrections They had a number of RARs as well. One is for an intermediate, or immediate intervention diversion officer, Laura told me not to do that, and I did it anyway. That position, their diversion officers for juvenile have been historically supported by fee support. With the Juvenile Justice Reform Bill, they set a cap on the amount that you could charge for those services, and that program is no longer sustainable without additional funding. We added one position last year for them, they are still going to run out of funds, their expenditures surpassed their revenues by about $7,000 a month, they'll run out of funding by the end of the year. So we're requesting that we add another position for them, and that should fix that problem. They also requested jury fees, they wanted to increase the amount that jurors are paid from $10 up to $25 to $50 a day. We included in the budget a $20 a day rate for jury fees. And we also included a partial funding, one-time funding for their equipment reserve. They had two other requests that were not funded, one was for county funding for their pre-trial program, and one was for a veteran treatments court coordinator. That veterans treatment court grant that they have currently will end during the third quarter of the grant year. So they were requesting just a single quarter for the year for funding for that, and that was not included at this time. And then I included some measures on the last slide there, just showing that their outcomes, their success rates are very good in their juvenile and adult probation in their pre-trial programs. Outcomes have been getting...
Chairman?
Yeah, let's go back one... Let's hold on just a minute. Go ahead and finish, we have a question over here first, then we'll come back.
Just pointing out that their outcomes have been very good over the last few years, that's all. I understand, any questions?
Well, not so much a question, other than, you know, as we document the issues that the state has put on us from Senate Bill 367, I think this is another issue that we should note as we document that stuff. Thank you.
Right, absolutely. Let's click up.
Yep, could you go back one slide there? Just taking a look at veterans treatment court coordinator, the funding on that goes away, so you're saying that they're short a quarter of the funding?
They're short a quarter. We're expecting that they'll be able to absorb that for that quarter, they'll run into a problem the following fiscal year.
For 2020?
Correct.
The grant will not be available?
Correct.
Beyond that?
It's a BJA grant, and it's...
I can't hear you.
It's a BJA grant, it's a one-time only, so it was a three-year grant, but you cannot request continued funding through that same grant. We're currently in the process of looking for a different grant, so that we can continue that position.
I guess the question is, when we take these dollars for pilot programs, other types of programs, I would be very curious in the future, as we accept these funds, what the, if it's successful, what the plans are to either continue it, or if not, because it seems like all of a sudden we come up to these lines here, and if we're going through a tough budget time, things that may have a lot of value end up getting thrown over to the side, and so this one kind of concerns me a little bit. Okay?
Well, if it's possible to absorb the $7,000 costs for '19, I think we'd all be interested in the funding opportunity for 2020, as far as this program is concerned. No question about it.
And there's actually advantages to that for 2020, because right now, under the grant, this employee is not allowed to work on any other specialty courts. So if it becomes a general funded position, we can expand the scope of that coordinator to assist with other specialty courts.
Oh, okay, very good. Mr. Ajibah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Ms. Stocks, your announcement about the court strategic planning effort, that's very exciting, good for you, that's a big deal, okay? And I'm sure you finagled it because the judges knew, and he didn't know anything about it, but you're to be commended for taking that forward, because it really goes to some court issues, some core issues about court service and how we present court performance, which is important. And while I am going to share the pleasure that maybe the legislature is giving some additional funding for staff, which is good, the question I had, I didn't see and hear is trying to understand what your turnover rate is and the impact that has on court operations that many times.
Certainly. Off the top of my head, if I remember, in 2016, we had a 27% turnover rate in our state court clerk office, there are no county positions in the clerk's office, and I think we equated it to around $360,000 in the average cost of turnover for that year alone.
And you and I had talked about that before, I knew it was high, but that, to me, seems like a core issue for court performance, however you want to measure success. And I just, I just didn't see anything in terms of your budget request to attack that issue, and maybe there's just no way possible for the county to help.
Well, you'll find, with the county, the county employees are paid at a level where we do not face the same issues that we face with the state related to turnover or recruitment.
Yeah, but in years past, and Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, the county has given some kind of, I'll call it supplemental support to certain judges, and I don't know if that's ever been explored, and that may not be an issue we want to really investigate on some levels, but in terms of impact in court performance, that's 25% turnover, that's a year, that's really not acceptable for most organizations, okay?
Correct.
So having said that, why this, what do you call it, immediate intervention diversion officer position versus all the other potential positions, programmatic opportunities that you have, why has this one come to the top?
This is the fund, this is the fund that's most at risk right now. This fund, because of what we were able to charge in the past prior to Senate Bill 367, has really been a self-sufficient program, so we funded it through the use of fees as well as a supplemental grant.
So that's the driver there?
The driver there for that one position is... The driver there for that one position is that we are barely going to make it through the year on our current fee structure because of the mandates to reduce fees.
Okay. All right. Well, and I would be interested, because long-term, looking at the court filings, it does look like the overall court filings are down fairly significantly from 10 years ago. And I do understand that there have been some technological improvements, which are great, and some staffing, not relocations, but reassignments. Thank you. I would be interested in understanding that a little bit more deeply. We can do that sometime later during the process. And I really am interested in how you measure success, but your answer may be, this is going to be embedded in the strategic planning process, and I can recognize that, but we still, I'd like to understand that.
Mr. Allen.
Just to follow up on a couple of items on the Veterans Treatment Court. I was able to attend one of those graduations. Very compelling stories, and it sounds like there's a lot of support on the DA's up here to find a way to continue that. Hopefully, it would also decrease the average daily population, but very successful program. And frankly, for veterans, I'd like to see the county to keep that program obviously in support. And I'm glad to hear the comments. It's always been a concern of mine, and frankly, the pay disparity between the employees that work for the county and then the other employees that work in the court system, and frankly, the pay of the judges. And as Commissioner Osterhaus mentioned earlier, maybe as a board, we need to make that more of a priority to address this issue with the state legislature as a priority platform, that turnover ratio, and just the cost right there. If you were able to give that money in salary increases, frankly, would probably decrease that quite a bit. And I know that we have several judges, I think, that are going to be retiring to recruit and retain top professional legal minds in this county. We need to have the ability to attract and hold those long-term. So I see those as two issues that probably we need, as a board, to get more behind, in my opinion, and elevate that, and make sure people are properly compensated and allow the judges and the court employees to their jobs. And if I heard you correctly, the starting salary is $11.25?
It's around $11.50 now. The exact same clerk in the DA's office, the same grade, the county pay starts at over 17 an hour.
So quite a bit... Yeah.
And that's not even, also talking about the people who do work for us, and how many of them have part-time jobs outside of the courthouse?
Food banks and everything. I just would echo what Commissioner Ashcraft said. That type of turnover, just how you operate is probably amazing. There's a lot of things we're frankly not aware of, but good people leaving. I mean, you train them, and obviously, they're going somewhere else and being compensated correctly.
They're going to the DA's office.
They go to the DA's office or another county position.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
No, it's just astounding to me that those in the State House don't recognize the importance of adequately compensating not only the courts, but there are some other critical activities in the state that are in the same situation. So, okay. Anything else from the Budget Office or the courts?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Court Trustee. We have Nicolette Bennett with us, and I'm just going to ask her to make any comments or updates that she would like to give.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Our office typically is not before you. I asked for this opportunity because we are proudly a part of the county. I thought there may be a little bit of information to share, and certainly, if there are any questions, to be answered.
Before you begin, could you say again your name?
Sure. It's Nicolette Bennett.
Okay. Thank you.
And I've had the honor of having been appointed the District Court Trustee in February of 2016. Our office simply enforces child support and spousal support orders, maintenance. In 2017, we collected over $74.5 million. Our budget is around $2 million. That funds 16 FTE. Obviously, when you look at budget numbers, there's a little bit more. We do have some positions that are not presently filled. One of the most recent activities that we had in 2017 was moving our staff back into the courthouse from the Justice Annex, where we were for almost four years. So we're excited about the new courthouse, because that will be our new home in the future. We have the distinguished factor of being, or having the lowest enforcement fee in the state among court trustees. It's 2.5% with a monthly cap of $30 shared between parties. And what that means is we are fully fee-funded. So that's partly why you don't see me before you, asking for positions or addressing any other issues. Pretty much what I have, and if you have any questions. Short and sweet.
Just real quick.
First time I've seen, you know, you're way ahead of the Budget Department. I'll note that.
Quickly, again, they're largely revenue-funded. They have a total published budget excluding cost allocation and risk management of $1.65 million. None of that is local tax support. There's a slight decrease in positions for them. Decline in positions has to do with a lower rate of revenue. So we eliminated some positions because they didn't have the revenue to fill those positions. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Back up again. I was listening to the numbers you gave originally of your budget and the $74 million that you've collected, and you're doing that with fewer employees?
Yes.
And that's adequate?
Yes.
That's a good model.
All right.
Right there. I like that. To the point, what more can we add?
It's kind of unusual.
You're excused. That's... No, no, no. Mr. Ashkra.
Very good. We've heard from the previous presenters, some upticks in activity in the court. Are you seeing a resurrection of activity, or has it been pretty flat, or is it decreasing? I know your budget is down, and your personnel are down, but the work volume, is it, how are you being impacted? Or if you don't know, since you are fairly new, I would understand.
Probably something to clarify is that in Johnson County, there are two entities that enforce support orders. One being District Court Trustee's office, and we have around 8,000 court orders that we enforce on, and that's a fairly stable number. The other entity is the Department for Children and Families for the state of Kansas. Those are what we call internally the Title IV D. It's under the Social Security Act. When someone receives specific types of assistance from the state, or without receiving any assistance whatsoever, applies for services from the state, the state of Kansas has an entity that enforces support orders. Again, we have around a little over 8,000 cases. The best number that I have from the state is that they have in excess of 12,000 cases. So 150% of what our office has. Biggest difference is being that many of those cases have people that receive assistance. So a lot of the support orders are a lower amount. Many of the people that owe support may have multiple orders or may have obstacles challenging their employment. What that means is many of the orders that my office enforces tend to be parties that have higher incomes and are more likely and more frequently paying in. So that's really kind of just a big difference between the two. And with that, we're able to take advantage of a number of electronic means. We utilize the court system. We're located in the courthouse, so we have benefits from that. But as far as what are those shifts, you know, are we seeing more, less orders? Probably, the court could confirm divorce filings are probably down, but paternity cases perhaps may be higher, or support cases, just from a general change where fewer people are getting married. Doesn't mean they're not having children, but it's a relatively stable arena at the time, not a huge increase or decrease.
Make sure I understand. So if you have two cases, and one of them receives state support for some other process, one of them does not, you service the one that does not, and the state services the one, the other one?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. All right. I wasn't aware of that. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we have Corrections. Carrie, talk slide over to me. She's going to take over.
Good afternoon. Carrie Holick with the Budget Office. With me today is Susan Dugan, Assistant Director of Corrections, and Keith Clark, Project Manager. And I will turn it over to Susan to begin with an overview of Corrections.
Thank you. I would like to say that Robert Sullivan wished he could have been here today, but he is taking on his other hat today, which Monday he will be able to kind of reduce that by not being the Criminal Justice Coordinator anymore, so. I just wanted to start out by a little bit, tell you a little bit about us. We're committed to working with this difficult population by only utilizing supervision methods that effectively bring about behavioral change in offenders. Success will require effective monitoring in the delivery of services, fidelity to procedures that correlate to increased accountability, and a sustained integrity to the agency's mission. This involves collecting and reviewing offender data and having the flexibility to make adjustments as needs arises. Our agency priorities are to be accountable for ensuring we are a program that effectively implements risk, need, and responsiveness principles to reduce an offender's risk of reoffending. We will achieve this by targeting moderate to high-risk offenders, using validated risk assessments in combination with cognitive behavioral programming, offender workforce development services, and referrals to community-based resources. We have tried to fully integrate evidence-based practices, organizational development, and collaboration with external stakeholders to facilitate our offender's success, completion of community, successful completion of community supervision. So Robert just kind of wanted me to give you that heads-up there. To talk a little bit here about what Maury said earlier on the GEMS Corrections implementing kiosk to automated public management system. On that, the system will allow our staff to virtually go paperless. Clients will sign out at a kiosk in the unit. Approval to go to work will be done electronically by the staff member in the control center or by a staff member walking the unit utilizing the computer tablet. The kiosk will additionally allow the client to submit passes, remedies, grievances, PriA anonymous reports, check their property inventory, among other things. And finally, when the system is fully operational, staff will utilize tablets to conduct virtual headcounts instead of paper counts. The project will allow staff more time to interact with clients instead of passing, processing paperwork. So that's a good thing for us. Our key points, the first key point is the juvenile crisis center, which is an unmet need that Maury talked about earlier. Do you want me to continue to talk about it, Maury?
Sure.
Okay. With Senate Bill 367, which was the juvenile justice reform, the presumption was that youth would remain in the home as opposed to the out-of-home placements that have occurred. Many of these youth have severe presenting issues that impede their ability to function within the community, home or home. They are both, they are not eligible for placement outside the home, mental health, behavior, substance abuse, or cognitive issues. We need a short-term placement, 30 to 60 days, that can address these issues simultaneously for youth that are unable or unwilling to remain in the home. Some youth end up in the juvenile detention center, but could be diverted if a crisis center was available. Runaway youth will no longer be eligible for placement in JDC, our juvenile detention center, after July 1st of 2019. Additional placement option is necessary to address these youth. So that's the reason why we have the need for that. Fidelity implementation, ensuring evidence-based programs are operating as designed, this is a primary need for us as well. The primary components there include rapport building, accurate risk needs assessments, which include the LSIR, YLS, and the CMI assessments, targeted case plans that address criminogenic needs, and effective communication strategies utilizing effective practices in community settings. We also need timely and effective feedback and coaching, as sporadic and inconsistent, and is oftentimes punitive in nature. So we want to change staff in doing that as well. Agency assessors lack proficiency related to their ability to evaluate staff and provide feedback and coaching, so we're going to train staff on that as well. So that's one of our main functions also. Hiring and retention is the next one, and that has a lot to do with our employment turnover rates. In 2015, we had 21%. In '17, we did decrease to about 18%. But we still consistently have vacancies in our Corrections Advisors, as well as our Youth Corrections Advisors. We have formed a department committee, which includes representation from Human Resources. Is currently meeting to brainstorm ideas associated with screening, interviewing, hiring, training, skill development, and retention. Also, we developed a plan of action to address employment, recruitment, and retention as a KDOC outcome measurement for our state fiscal year 2019 in our comprehensive plan. So we did include that, so we will report on that to the state as well. The last one is our house arrest, and it's the upward trajectory of population being served. Currently, our ADP for 2015 was 302. In 2017, we rose to 357. We see that raising even more in the next few years. Currently, a Latham Municipal Court is now referring all clients to Johnson County House Arrest. So we estimate approximately 40 additional referrals each month will occur. So that's an area we need to continue to watch and monitor and watch the caseloads for our staff as well. And I'll turn it back over to Carrie.
All right. The total published budget for 2019 excluding cost allocation and risk management is $32.69 million. Budgeted FTEs for 2019 are $312.64. And then the corrections for, sorry, the proposed changes for corrections include a juvenile services center camera system funded with equipment reserve and $165,898 reduction to transfers to equipment reserve. Trends and measures include the average daily population for house arrest, percent of discharged adult community corrections successfully released from supervision, employee turnover rate, and employee engagement score. Does anyone have any questions?
Let me ask you this, and I don't know, Susan, whether it's you or whether it's Mr. Thompson, the, going back to the juvenile issue and the Senate bill that was enacted, what, a year or two ago, and its impact on local governments. Can you refresh our memory? There was, as I recall, some state facilities were closed. The idea was that money would come to local governments?
That's correct.
And was there some activity in the legislature this year to change that?
There's a piece of legislation that was pending. Let me give you a backup. You've got the situation correct. The passage of Senate Bill 367, it really mandated the closure of all YRC's youth residential centers too in Johnson, across the state. We were operating one, the Department of Corrections was, at the Youth and Family Services Center that was referred to as Foundations. That forced the closure of that facility. The whole premise behind the passage of Senate Bill 367, juvenile justice reform, was that you would shut down some options, and you would take those statewide savings... you would shut down some options and you would take those statewide savings and reinvest them in community-based options. There was a dollar figure identified for savings. My recollection was, the state then identified a lesser amount than full savings that they would reinvest in the community. Those funds, in my opinion, have been slow to flow back to the community. We are hopeful that if we decide with your approval, once we have a plan for juvenile crisis center, that that would be a significant amount of that funding would be derived from the state in those savings dollars.
Okay. So, currently, what happens to that population, that Johnson County population that might have been in a state youth services center?
Again, we've got some staff here who can probably better address that. Ted, if you want to step up here. Ted Jestor, Juvenile Services Director. But, quite frankly, there just are a lack of options for these juveniles that we're talking about. They were eliminated, and nothing has been put in their place yet. Ted, how would you like to add to that?
Yeah. Hi. Ted Jestor, Director of Juvenile Services Center. Thank you, Chairman. So, there were some programs such as functional family therapy, multi-systems therapies, that were funded for communities to treat youth in the home. We funded and went for the youth advocacy program to help as an intensive mentorship program to work with those at-risk kids. And so, we've had that program, I think, for a little over a year, a year and a half now, that's been doing that. But, you are correct, the funding is slow to come. There is currently Senate Bill 179 that's still being debated, but it's expected to pass, which then would fund the juvenile crisis intervention center, which would give law enforcement the option of, when a youth is in crisis, to have a place for them, to take them. So, that's to answer part of your question. Susan Dugan alluded to July 1 of 2019. Those are chronic runaways that are children in need of care. Currently, the law allows for those individuals to be placed in a detention center. And so, as of July 1, 2019, that part of Senate Bill 367 kicks in where that is no longer an option. So, the question becomes, what do you do with those chronic runaways? A crisis center could be a short-term option for that, but under the law, even the existing emergency shelter laws and regulations prohibit secure care, or secure facilities, which is what a secure care center is, a secured facility where they cannot get out. So, even if we use that as an option for the crisis center, they could still run away. But, are there other questions?
So, the juvenile crisis center would be something similar to RSI for adults?
Yes. That is the model that we're looking at very closely.
Okay. So, there's, so there's still, so there are still kids part of the juvenile justice area?
Right.
That there's no recourse for them?
Right. So, let's put it this way. So, KAR 28-4-354B prohibits any youth being placed into a juvenile detention center that has mental impairment. So, what we'll see is happening is, we'll have somebody come into our juvenile intake and assessment center. We recognize that they're in crisis. We'll call the hotline. Johnson County Mental Health will come do an assessment, and then we'll figure out where that youth needs to go. That may be Merillac, that may be KVC, and that. So, that's one place that they can go. What happens in the detention side is, we've got a youth in detention that now is deteriorating and is in an acute crisis, or has some chronic mental health issues that need to be addressed in a psychiatric residential treatment facility. So, we will try to get them access into services, but they linger in detention for that time being until a bed becomes available. It's not as problematic on the acute side, because that's where someone is actively self-harming or has psychosis and is in imminent danger to themselves. We can usually get them into Merillac or KVC within four to eight hours. But, for a child that needs psychiatric residential treatment facilities for those chronic conditions may linger three to six months, depending on their age. And when they don't need to be in detention, that's where they're going to be. And so, there's just a lot of combinations of different things. We believe that a juvenile crisis intervention center, whether it's through Senate Bill 179 or through other means, would be able to provide some short-term crisis observation, crisis stabilization, be a resource to law enforcement where they could just bring them to the juvenile intake and assessment center. We would assess them just like we normally do and get them right into a crisis center where we can provide those services right away. It's also a step down from acute, or it might be a way to avoid hospitalization altogether and keep that family intact.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ashcraft. You have the best.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Dugan, Mr. Clark, I want to commend you on your subtle balanced scorecard presentation on this slide. I get that. It's real good. Is there a baseline that you are striving for on measures like this? And I just would be interested in that, and we don't have to discuss it now. But, I think, because when I look at your budget changes for 19, it actually, if you set aside the transfers in and out, it actually looks like you're reducing staff by one. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And yet, you're managing more people in-house. So, some would argue that there's been a performance improvement of some sort, and I suspect, given your background, you monitor that pretty closely. Am I interpreting this correctly?
I think that position that went away was an unfunded position.
Okay.
That was previously a grant-funded position, and we just said
Okay.
we were not going to get the grant. And so, I said, go ahead and remove that.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Allen?
Ms. Dugan, you referenced the city of Alatha maybe on average is referring 40 cases a month of, for house arrest. When those are referred, do we receive any type of fee or?
Yes. The clients are, the clients pay the fees
Okay.
on that.
But, there's a fiscal impact for your department above those fees that are collected?
We keep the fees, and they go into a fee fund, and that rolls over each year. So, those fees, if they increase, and we have enough fees, we could look at adding another position and coming back through the process if we see that need, if their caseloads get high enough.
I guess the only question I have is, if one city starts doing that, and some of the larger cities start doing the similar, maybe what impact that would have on your operation if that would happen?
Overland Park, we currently get a lot of theirs. I don't remember other, Shawnee.
And some from Lenexa.
Lenexa.
Okay. So, you're to get.
So, some of those, yeah. Most of Overland Park refers to this, and then some from Lenexa.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, first, thank you, Ted, for jumping into that conversation. He did mention early on in his comments that one of the options we did put in place was the youth advocate program. Just a reminder, you heard Betsy talk about that as YAP, so that may ring a bell with some of you, was the acronym that that went by. So, you may recall that.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next department is Emergency Management and Communications. Today with me is Ellen Wernicki, Director of Emergency Management and Communications. I will turn it over to Ellen to cover the next two slides.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you know, EMC has four different, pretty diverse divisions. We have our Emergency Communications Center, which handles all of our fire and EMS calls for service, as well as dispatching for the fire and EMS agencies in the county. Our Communication Services Division administers the countywide public safety radio system, the Medical Director Program, which I think all of you are very familiar with, as well as emergency management. While each has their very unique strategic priorities, our overarching mission is that we're just providing exemplary emergency services to the community. So, key points. In August of 2017, we launched Pulse Point. That was a region-wide launch. It is an app that the public can download to get alerted to cardiac arrest events with the goal of hopefully increasing bystander CPR and ultimately impacting positive patient outcome. As you can see by the numbers, we've increased that pretty significantly. So, we have just under 6,500 subscribers to that app. So, that's a great thing for us. Our 911 calls continue to increase annually. We see it as NG 911, Next Generation 911, comes along, which will allow us to receive multimedia messages into the center. We anticipate that that's going to grow even more. The other thing with that is that we will be getting video and pictures into the center that will ultimately impact staff resilience. So, we're remaining aware of that. NotifyJOCO, we're excited because we continue to grow NotifyJOCO, although the demands surrounding that continue to grow with the number of participants that we continue to add. We currently have two fire districts, 11 cities, and Water One, in addition to the county, that are paying participants into that NotifyJOCO program. The Medical Director Program continues to expand. Right now, we have all of our nine fire districts and fire departments, as well as MEDACT, and all of the Johnson County hospitals are now participating in that program. The countywide radio system is currently meeting the needs of 32 public safety departments in Johnson County, as well as 15 non-public safety departments. So, a number of our Public Works Departments, Transit, and the like are using the system. But, the important thing to know is that we're one of two host radio systems for the Greater Metropolitan Area Regional Radio System. So, the impact goes far beyond Johnson County with that. Emergency management, and this is timely in light of our storms last night, I think we can all understand the importance of emergency preparedness and the expectations in the community. Those, as our requirements and needs grow, the demands grow. We have several gaps right now in our emergency management programs that we're trying to fill, and so, we're remaining aware of that. We also saw some comments on our citizen survey in relation to that. Our departments also, I heard it, I think Catherine mentioned it earlier, our department's also going through a five-year strategic planning process right now, so we're looking forward to the outcome of that. So, with that said, I will pass it back to Carrie.
Okay. Thank you. Total published budget for 2019 excluding cost allocation and risk management is $6.77 million. Budgeted FTEs for 2019 are 53. Proposed changes include two funded CIPs, countywide radio system infrastructure, and antenna repeater systems. The Medical Director can be funded with the existing budget, and the Emergency Management Specialist was not funded. Trends and measures include the number of calls for service, number of 911 calls, and number of individuals educated, trained for, to prepare for disasters. I also will briefly mention, the 911 funds are included in this, in the agency budget information book. The 911 fund is budgeted at $4.9 million for 2019. And we will stand for any questions.
Okay. Could you back up to the summary slide, a couple, slide? Yes. You mentioned 11 cities, two fire districts. Why aren't the other jurisdictions involved in NotifyJOCO?
So...
Are they covered by some of their?
They are. Many of those have their own internal notification systems now, but that's not preventing us from engaging in them and trying to get them on as partners in the system.
Okay. And you mentioned the 911 funds. I know we've always maintained balances there, and the reason for that is because those funds can only be spent on 911 services, I'll use that term broadly. Are we maximizing every year our ability to expend those funds for appropriate 911 uses?
We certainly are.
What would be an example that we could use them for, and perhaps one that we can't?
So, one that's really relevant right now was a part of the budget process last year, and that was the backup project with the new courthouse project. Our current backup center is in the basement of the existing courthouse, and it was not part of the design plan with the new courthouse. So, we were able to leverage the greater majority of that project utilizing 911 funds. So, those types of capital expenditures are things that we try to plan for and project out, in addition to our annual radio system maintenance, which is in excess of $1 million.
But, for personnel costs to operate those systems, that's off limits?
No. No personnel costs can be used out of that.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building a little bit on what you just asked, in past few years, there have been some conversations about the number of PSEPs that we have in Johnson County, not the region, just in Johnson County. I think that's six?
Yes.
That's six. So, is there going to be any further conversation about opportunities to leverage those efforts, including coordination, consolidation, to get at those non-covered costs, as the chairman is talking about? And then, by extension, have we thought about approaching the legislative body concerning the use of 911 funds for more than just capital items? And I know you've had some success on other efforts, but has that ever been broached? And so, any observations there? Because six, just, I just struggle personally with that and how that works. And I know there are entanglements about what people do and how they do it, but in terms of actual direct cost to taxpayers, is that the optimal number?
Well, let me go in reverse
Please.
if you don't mind. I'll tackle the legislative question first. I think many of you know that we attempted to change the statute this year and increase the 911 fund statewide. Part of that was addressing, or the discussion about the number of PSEPs. That was unsuccessful, but we are continuing our efforts into next year, and hopefully that we will get support of that. As far as expanding the use of the funds, I'll give you an example of that. Today, you can't use the 911 fund to purchase portable radios on the hip of an officer or a fireman. It's not allowable. Many municipalities want that, and so, there is energy about having that discussion. So, those types of expenditures, those topics are coming up in the conversation. As far as the number of PSEPs, you've heard some dialogue in the region about what we're trying to do regionally, and I know you didn't want to hit on that, but I think it's relevant in the conversation. I think the strategy more is trying to regionalize software and systems to make it easier to regionalize backups, which we are actively in the process of doing that now. We have an agreement with Douglas County, and they utilize our center as a backup. We're in conversation with Wyandotte County right now, and we're formalizing our agreement with Miami County. So, cost savings there means those agencies can get rid of their backup centers and utilize the county communications center for their backup. As far as the six PSEPs in Johnson County, I think every municipality has their unique needs. I certainly think that it would be an interesting conversation. We do, they do use our center as a backup center, so...
And how do you measure success? I mean, the charts that are presented talk about the number of calls for service and the number of 911 calls. But, is, how would I look at that and say, well, is this, are we being successful? The number of calls versus the timeliness or the accuracy? The, I mean, is this, is this how we should measure success?
So, I think a couple of things. As far as timeliness goes, it's important to understand that our operation is part of the fire department accreditation process for the Center of Excellence, which we go through with a number of our fire departments. And our operation impacts ISO ratings. So, the timeliness of how we process calls impacts the fire department's ISO ratings pretty significantly. So, we're very aware of that. We're very, how do I say this without sounding? We do a really good job at processing calls, and from a timeliness perspective, we're one of the top in the nation, and we've heard other people tell us that. So, we're pretty happy about that. As far as other success measures, I think we could introduce new technologies and software that might increase our ability to process calls even faster, code calls appropriately, but...
Okay. Well, I just find that selection of measures interesting. And one last question, and this may not be a question for you, it may be for the MEDACT Director, but it... director, but it, it relates to the medical director, if I have the, the right person in mind. There have been comments to me over the last number of years, that when there is an emergency call, an ambulance will show up, as well as, in some cities, a fire department truck and so forth, and there will be a number of medical professionals, EMTs or whatever. And, when I say a number, I mean, two, three, four. And, I am just, I just wonder if the medical director, or if this is the right person, or maybe I should talk to the, the MEDACT director about this, but if, if that's really the best use of that professional resource? Because, in most instances, the service is, is not dire and substantial, and we have so much resource there, is that, is that really the best use? Because, there are high-paid individuals.
So, today, every fire department has the ability to manage their own response plans, if you will, and resource those calls as they see fit. A positive thing that's happening right now, there is discussion countywide with every fire department about standardizing those responses. Part of what you're describing is part of that dialogue.
And, does that include multiple emergency personnel expertise from MEDACT? Our folks are well-trained, but do all of them have to have the same level of training and service to provide adequate or even superior care? Because, one criticism I heard is that, that they sometimes get into each other's ways, and...
I think, I think the director of MEDACT, when he's at the dais, can probably answer that question better.
That's, that's fair. That's fair. I just, I think there are... Just wondering about the medical director.
Yeah. There are reasons which can be explained, whether they're totally accepted or not, I don't know.
That's fine. That's fine. Fair enough, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Anything else? Any other questions?
I have one, Chairman. On slide twenty-five, Ellen, if you could just, who are the two, on the third bullet point, two fire, two fire districts? Who are the two?
Consolidated Fire District Number Two and Northwest Consolidated.
Northwest, okay, thank you.
All right, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to Jim, so, let me get Tom back up here.
Broken. Tom Dugan from Budget, once again. Tim Mulcahy could not make it today, so we have Barry Haldeman, who is the supervisor over the program, programmers with Jim's, and I'm gonna have him just touch on a few things that are happening with the Jim's Department.
Good afternoon, Barry Haldeman, Jim's Department. One of the things, go on to the next slide. One of the things about going further down this list is that most people have talked about your key points already. Only thing I can really add to the, to the Niche Project is that it is also being implemented in Kansas City, Missouri this year, so we hope that there'll be improved regional coordination. Electronic jury questionnaire, which the court administrator talked about, I can give you a number for outcomes. We talked about the number of people qualified for jury service. The electronic process has increased that percentage seventeen percent over the paper process. Again, the corrections talked about the kiosk for the adult residential center, again, mostly a, again, a paperwork reduction, getting electronic records for, for those types of transactions that are occurring in the adult residential center. The last item on the list, if you walked into the courthouse today, you would see paper stuck up outside courtrooms at the entrance, listing dockets for people, and they come in, try and look at a piece of paper, several, what we're, what we're looking to do here in the next few months is to put up an electronic thing, like you would go into the airport. Again, as flights leave, as court cases are thirty minutes past their time, those will fall off and, and be replaced by upcoming court hearings. So, it'll be a little more professional-looking than pieces of paper stuck up outside courtrooms, so...
Okay, the Jim's budget is, total published budget excluding cost allocation and risk management is four-point-two-six million, and they have twenty-five FTEs. You'll notice that their FTEs have increased by six over the last couple of years. That is because of two things, really. One is the, the MEDACT folks that are now served by the Jim's Department, and also the Niche Project, so, and that's happened over the last few years. The last slide, really wanna point out with the additional budget that they now have and the additional personnel, really, if you look at what's happened with them in terms of cost per user, they've stayed pretty flat. They have, they're serving more people, their budget's higher, but the cost per user is pretty much the same as it was four years ago. And with that, we can answer any questions that you may have.
I'd just make this comment going back to the internet jury selection, or jury notification. Personal observation, it does work very well. Other questions? Mr. Ashkaff?
And I thank you, you came very close to answering my questions, but the, the change from seventeen to eighteen, were that, was that due exclusively to transfers in and out? Or were there actually new positions added? Slide thirty-one. Okay, I have a different slide, thirty-one, yeah.
I believe all, six of those were existing positions?
Just transferred from...
Yes, if that's what you're asking.
That's why I thought you said so. Very good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Specifically, three were MEDACT and three were from the sheriff's office.
Okay, I heard the MEDACT part, but I didn't hear the, the sheriff's part. Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We included Law Library. Unless there's any questions, I'll move quickly through this. Their published budget excluding cost allocation and risk management stayed really pretty flat, went down just a little bit. Budgeted FTEs stayed exactly the same. Unless there are questions about this one, I'll just move on.
Any questions?
No.
All right.
Next up is MEDACT.
Good afternoon, Jack Abig with the Budget Office. I'm joined here with Paul Davis, Director of MEDACT, and his financial person, Debbie Attick. And I'll turn it over to Paul.
Good afternoon. Medical emergencies in Johnson County will have the best possible outcome, and we ensure that by providing a continuity of out-of-hospital care.
Is the green light on?
And a community-wide feeling of safety and confidence. There are several ways we do that.
Paul, could you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
Yeah. Sure.
That's better.
Don't need to repeat anything?
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, as far as the continuity of out-of-hospital medical care, we seek to ensure the best possible care, to optimize outcomes, be timely, courteous, and thoughtful, value all people equally and seamlessly. A prepared community, we seek to, we, we seek to reduce illness and injury by, through prevention, lessen the impact of accidents, and provide an empowered public that recognizes emergencies and who knows what to do and will help. Likewise, the community-wide feeling of safety and confidence, we strive to ensure peace of mind. We seek to be trusted and well-respected, and we also want to respect privacy and protect that privacy, and also, we value stewardship. In the, in the past year or so, well, actually, just in March of this year, we added two more additional ambulances to help us meet those goals. And, that is to make sure that we're meeting our call demand, our peak call demand in a timely manner. And, so far, without definitive measures, we're doing pretty good. And, reducing some calls in some busier stations and impacting our response time as well. And, I look forward to, in a few months, bringing those reports to you, to let you see what they look like. Our key points, with the growing demand for paramedics, recruitment and retention has become more difficult. Now, it's not just, it's not just about the money, it's not just about compensation, but also benefits, hours, flexibility, and opportunity, and also, the work. Some of our obstacles with recruitment, retention include competing with other healthcare providers, other healthcare professions, other public safety professions, and providing that right niche and finding the right person with quality and integrity will help us meet our pillars of performance. We also experience increased costs of supplies and equipment annually, roughly about three to eight percent on average across the board. In some areas, it might be double-digit percentage increases. But, we strive to offset that by prioritizing our purchases and to ensure that the most crucial needs are met and focusing on the essentials. Sometimes, equipment replacement has to be deferred until it's absolutely necessary and we can afford it, maybe balance the need one year to the next. But, we've also engaged in more robust preventive maintenance programs. For instance, our ambulance cots have a manufactured, recommended life of about seven years. We're seeking to get another three years out of each of those, just by maintaining them and making sure that they work well. So, those, the cots, the stair chairs, our Lucas CPR device, those things that can be maintained, we're gonna seek to do that and make some differences where possible. Our reimbursements from CMS, from Medicare are static, and they have been for quite some time. Our average reimbursement for, for Medicare is about three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. That's roughly forty-five percent of the estimated cost of responding to a call and transporting a patient. Medicare reimbursement is static, but it's also, the reimbursement is based on patient condition, so there are some variances in some degrees of reimbursement that change a little bit, but generally, that's our average, three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars through reimbursement. Also, we know that data sharing and reporting is important. One, it's vital to ensure the appropriate patient information is shared with the receiving hospital and the medical director. It's vital to ensure that we're compliant with state and federal regulations, and quality data sharing and reporting provides improved research capability to more successfully plan and develop our programs and resources. Also, to share information with other departments and the county to maximize services.
MEDACT's total published budget excluding cost allocation and risk management is twenty-one-point-three-eight million for 2019, of which eleven-point-eight-three million is local tax support. Their FTE increased to one-forty-four-point-five-three with the transfer of an FTE from another You'll notice, yep, thank you. We have one proposed change for MEDACT, which is a one-hundred, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar one-funded, one-time request for addition to their equipment replacement fund for the replacement of ambulances. And you'll notice on their trends and measures, we have the ambulance operation cost per mile, work-related injuries with time lost per month, bystanders CPR or AED before the ambulance arrival, and the percent of patient fee collections. And with that, turn it back to the chair for any questions.
Paul, let me ask you, you, you mentioned Medicare reimbursements. Does Medicaid reimburse at the same rate or a different rate?
Medicaid is, is less, about thirteen percent of the cost. Now, there's information being received just recently, as late as today, that we could see a Medicaid increase, but that still has to pass legislature.
Off the top of your head, or maybe your finance person does, what's the amount of uncompensated care that's provided by MEDACT?
Currently, we collect about sixty-five percent of what we bill, so we have about thirty-five percent that's not collected.
And that would be what dollar amount?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know the dollar amount, but our typical billings are about nine million. I believe we collect about seven million.
So, it'd be close to, at least two million, two and a half million?
Yeah.
That's uncompensated, yeah. Back, back to the vehicle, you say the life of the vehicle, seven, seven years, does that have to do with the mechanical versus the medical technology part of it, or both?
With respect to the...
Pardon?
The equipment...
Right. Right, right, the ambulance. You, you indicated the, the approximate life is seven years. Does that, is that mechanical portion, or is that the, the medical portion of the equipment?
It's the mechanical portion. And so, but if it's maintained well, stands for reason, it should last a little longer.
So, does, I guess what I'm trying to determine, so, so if you need a new unit, is it mechanical and you can transfer the medical part, or, or is the total unit new?
Chassis versus the box?
Yeah, so, so, one of the things we did this, this year, we'll be taking delivery at the end of May or first of June, is a remounted box. So, we took the, the medical portion of the ambulance and put it on a new chassis. That saved us about forty percent. So, it, it can be remounted probably two or three times if it's quality and it's not road-degraded.
Okay. And, but you're still able to stay up with the, the needed changes in technology?
To this point, we are, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Mr. Allen?
I had a, had a question on what we would actually charge or, or send a bill out for somebody that was transported. We're looking for a 2019 budget. Was it a couple of years ago, last time we adjusted our rate or fees for the service? I didn't know if there's any room to project any type of fee increase. I know that there's some parameters that you have to follow, but if it's been a few years and your commodities and other cost are going up, the, the cost of the equipment, fuel, unfortunately, everything you provide is probably going up, not, not going down. I didn't know if there's any possibility to cover some of this deficit with a, a rate adjustment on that, and if we're able to collect at least from sixty-five percent of that, if, if that's possible, that some type of modest adjustment could be warranted, possibly.
Thank you for asking. So, are CMS allowable, what Medicare will allow us to charge, or what they're allowable to pay? For instance, on our typical paramedic transport is four-hundred-and-eight dollars and forty-one cents. What Medicare actually pays is eighty percent of that, about three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. What MEDACT charges is four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. So, what we've learned preliminarily through our audit and some research, is that MEDACT has the lowest ambulance fees in the metro area, sometimes sixty, seventy percent lower than other places.
Whoa.
So, there is room. We did some research late last year in 2017 with our billing company, Digitech, and just to pick a round number, realizing it's a double-digit number, ten percent, to see what a ten percent increase would look like, it would take that four-hundred-and-eighty-four-dollar amount to five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and forty cents. But, based on our call volume and our projected increase in call volumes and transports, I need to focus on transports, because that's where the money is, okay? We could see an increase of about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now, that's conservative, but we could see an increase.
And, the reason I ask that question, I, I guess I have concern because the county in a two-year period may grow an additional sixteen thousand in population, and the age and conditions of ambulances, and I would always stress, I, I would rather have up-to-date newer ambulances in service than the older ones in reserve. And, if we can find that type of money and get you a couple of new ambulances, new up-to-date equipment, again, you're a very highly-rated service within the county in our surveys, and I know personally, I hear nothing overall but compliments on that. If I have to make that phone call, or someone has to make it, they want a, want a professional person to respond, frankly, with up-to-date equipment and trucks. So, I know we went through a period with a recession where we went and not replaced those vehicles, but because you provide such a critical service, to me, this is one where we want to make sure that we do have up-to-date equipment. And again, we're projecting out a year and a half from today... And again, we're projecting out a year and a half from today on that, and as a county continues to grow, if we could find that additional revenue and make sure that your equipment is up-to-date, unless you're happy with the fleet and the replacement program we're on, but again, if we're not, that's something I'd rather err frankly on the side of replacing to make sure everything is up. That's such a critical piece of equipment, so.
Commissioners, this is your ambulance service, and we're committed to make sure that it's the best. I want to share with you my philosophy, though, that the taxes we pay are to make sure that that service is ready, that if you need an ambulance, it's going to be available to you. But if I have a heart attack, it's not up to you to pay my ambulance bill, that should be on me. And so, inasmuch as that I know that the county is providing tax support of about 55%, and don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you should fund this less, but what I'm saying is that we should be able to contribute more to the coffers to support that bottom half of the budget. There are certain things that we need that we're not getting, we're making do, we're repairing, and it's not dire, don't get me wrong, we're doing okay, but we're also starting to feel a pinch, and like I mentioned before, that we're prioritizing needs and making sure that we're getting the critical stuff done first. But in reality, this is a fee-for-service, and even though it's pretty low, and I think that's something to be proud of, that there's room for improvement. And I would like to explore that and maybe work with the Board of County Commissioners on a regular basis annually, just to review our fees and see if there's needed improvement.
Especially with the figure that you cited, that the county's current MedAq fees in the metropolitan area are on the low side, I'm not saying that that's good and hopefully could continue, but if there's some room where we could adjust it, still be low, to me, it'd sure be worth the looking at, so. But thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, I don't know whether it's possible, but there would be a point of less return, I guess I would call it. Your fees go up and fewer people are able to pay, and certainly, if Medicare reimbursements do not go up, you're not going to collect more from there. So, that 35% goes to 40% of unrecoverable, I'll put it that way. So, I understand it's a balance, but Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fair point, Mr. Chairman, but Chief, I want to commend you, I think it makes sense to review those fees annually, and not just your fees, but all fees that we have in the county in terms of demand for service and recovery, and try to make sure it's reasonable and fair, but also, those consuming the service carry their burden and not expect others, so I commend you for that. Couple of quick questions. It looks like there's a position being transferred in from HSD, which is Health and Human Services, okay? And then, the year before that, we had like six positions transferred in. Were those from the Overland Park transfer? What was the staffing increase, what was that due to?
Well, the staffing increase from '17 to '18 was the addition of 12 FTE.
I'm sorry?
It was the addition of 12 FTE for both an impact ambulance and the Overland Park service.
The impact ambulance, okay. I'd forgotten about that.
The one FTE this year is a transfer, it was FTE only from Human Services to MedAq and was converted to a training position, I believe.
Okay, very good. Chief, then, if I could, I was trying to ask a question about the medical director related to the optimal use of personnel resources and the criticism or observation that I have heard, that we have multiple well-skilled, and it's not, I'm not saying anything about their competency, but the question is, why do we have multiple people in these incidences, if I'm pronouncing that correctly? Why is there not just one? And those expertise, those individuals with expertise used elsewhere, because some accusations, and that's the wrong term, but some suggestion that, well, we have so many people show up with so much expertise at many locations when it's a minor incident, and they quote-unquote, what I've heard is, they seem to get in each other's way. I mean, how do we handle that? Are we considering different options, or is this the optimal approach as far as you're concerned?
Well, I'll answer that with two examples. First one would be a Code Three, which was our lowest priority call, maybe at a skilled-care facility where the patient's condition is not dire, they need to be transported to the hospital. That is likely to get an ambulance-only response. The fire department may be dispatched, but as more information comes in, the fire engine and the fire company may hold on that call and not respond. That's likely going to be the case. Take it to the other extreme, a cardiac arrest, for example, is very labor-intensive, and our cardiac arrest survival rates are largely due to the number of staff who are available to show up at the time. So, our staff, two paramedics on ambulance, one is going to run the call to make sure that the treatments are performed accurately, that the procedures are done well. The second paramedic is going to operate the equipment, or administrate the medication, or do the bone injection to get the fluids in. And then, the support staff, firefighters, if you will, would be there to make sure that adequate CPR is done, what's required. The standard in CPR is no more than two minutes on the chest, and so, that's labor-intensive. And the reason that's important is to make sure no one gets fatigued, no one gets too tired, and therefore, the CPR chest compressions get less. And so, really, it becomes then an incident in and of itself, just to manage those people and to make sure that they're performing well in the pit crew. And so, there are designed roles that are in place there. The lesser calls, the heart attack, for example, where it's still a critical situation, but maybe it doesn't take as many hands, we still need to move equipment, we still need to move the patient, and we still need to gather information. So, what is the right number of responders on a call without doing a little more research? I really have a hard time telling you that.
And that's fair enough. Then, I guess my question is, if the medical director agrees with that and is good with that, and I'm not going to second-guess you or the medical director, that's the only question I have.
Okay.
Mr. Ostrous.
Just kind of a follow-up on that. I mean, Chief, you probably have some instances where a call comes in and it's a lower priority, but you know, when someone arrives, it's a heart attack or something, you know, major, so I think you could probably say it's more of a variable, and when you're sending people, you know, it's not always like there's a cut-and-dry formula, you can put, you know, this call gets X number of people, just because you may get an initial call and turns out later, it's, you know, something more severe.
Well, I'll admit, it also depends by jurisdiction, the resources that we get.
Well, I think it simply boils down to this, you might have a call that comes in and is described as one type of incident, but after, whether it's MedAq and then a fire unit responds, it's evaluated, and if one of the units is not needed, then it's released to go on about, so.
We see that dynamic approach regularly, where the more information comes in, even en route, the call can be evaluated and resources would be canceled, or more resources sent, depending on the need.
Yeah, well, I think none of us would want the units to, before arriving on the scene, to debate the number of people who should show up.
Exactly.
So.
Actually, for the local fire departments, by far, their biggest call volume is assisting MedAq calls, so it's, I know in one city, I was told it was as high as 70% of their calls, so it's very significant, and again, you never know when, how many people are going to be needed, so, thank you.
Well, I don't know whether it's the way it is today, but years ago, it used to be there were different levels of training also that fire units had, and now, I think they're all very, very highly trained in medical activities, but, so, you needed, you know, a combination of expertise on the site, so.
Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, to Commissioner Ashcraft's questioning, which I'm following, you need to refer back to part of Ellen's response, too. There are current conversations going on with fire departments and MedAq about standardizing responses, which may get at least partially to your question.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Wanted to, Paul, if you could, I'd be interested in seeing some kind of a comparison of the other, in the metropolitan area, other government-sponsored ambulance services, charges, how they charge relative to what we charge, so I have some gauge of what is average and what is fair, what is low. This is not my world, I'm a contractor, so this gets out of my realm, and I'd be interested in being able to look at that on a comparison basis.
I think our audit report will be coming out in the next couple of weeks, so if you want it sooner than that, I can probably find it.
That'd be fine, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Can I ask one more question, Chairman?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I know that, but on slide, it's over. Slide 40, the top-left corner, ambulance operation cost per mile, there in, from 2013 to 2017, there's been a 30 cent per mile increase according to that chart. What can, in a nutshell, what is driving that cost increase that dramatic?
What I believe is the type of chassis. There for a while, we were operating some pretty big trucks, the F-450s. Also, there were some freight liners that we were supporting as well. Those are gone, and I suspect that those prices will go down a little bit as well, but we also need to consider that the maintenance costs are increasing and fuel costs are increasing, so those are part of the drivers, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have Sheriff Hayden and Leslie Friedel with us today, and I think the sheriff is going to kick us off.
Good afternoon, guys. Sheriff. You gals. Now, there's a couple of key points here on our slides we'll go to, and drug crimes are increasing overall, methamphetamine cases nearly doubled in Johnson County over the past five years. We're approaching full staffing, in fact, by the end of the month, I just got the report today. As you know, we've been on a very aggressive hiring status for the last year, and since I took office, as of January, or April 30th of this year, we'll have hired 144 officers. We were 60 down when we stepped into office. Mr. Chairman, you asked me to try to reduce that overtime bill, I'm not sure we'll get too much of it down this year because of the training, but.
Making progress, a lot of progress.
That's a great progress, and I'm very proud of our people for doing it. You know, we've had a number of retirements, and you'll see in our staffing reports, there's a dip down and then it starts coming back up. So, our retention rate is about 5% without our retirees, it's about 7% with our retirees, so I'm pretty darn proud of that. Again, moving back to, our calls for service are up in the last three years, and thank to you guys, our FTEs are up to about 659 now. Like I said, on the 30th of this month, we'll be fully staffed. And you guys pretty much know what I'm moving sleepover. I've talked to each one of you about some of the crime rates in Johnson County, and I don't think I need to expand on that, so.
Sheriff. Mr. Clicker?
Sheriff, I hope the last couple of years, or year and a half, you're getting your feet wet, and things seem to be going pretty well, and I appreciate, I know I've been focused in on, in the past, to try and get the number of FTEs filled, and so we can ultimately get that overtime in check a little bit. But I know it doesn't happen overnight, and I think I kind of warned you, even though you were being a lot more optimistic, it wasn't going to happen quite as fast as you would like, but I appreciate the effort that you and the folks are doing. The other thing I want to call attention to is, the first time in many years that I've, at least I've served here, the attention I'm getting from my constituents out in the far north or southeast have been extremely positive for the response, and they feel like the sheriff's office is much more visible and attentive to what's going on. So, on behalf of them, I would like to express a thank you to you and to the folks that are involved with that. And then, I know we are scheduled to have a community meeting out there, and I'm looking forward to that and being with you at that. But overall, thanks for all the efforts that you've done on behalf of my district.
Mr. Commissioner, I wish I could take credit for all of it, but it's due to the efforts of our officers and our staff that have made those contacts, especially out in the Stanley-Stilwell area. They're doing a fantastic job with some pretty innovative programs they're putting together, and video cameras, using people that have video cameras at their house, putting that information together, doing town hall meetings, working together with the community. It's truly a pleasure to do it and see our officers doing that, so thank you.
Thank you, very good. Okay, continue, please.
The sheriff's total published budget excluding cost allocation and risk management is $85.3 million with $54.5 million in local tax support. Budgeted FTEs are recommended to go from $651.95 to $659.99. There are a number of RARs that are recommended for funding. The sheriff requested seven positions for an investigative task force, we've included three. They also had requested four for the crime lab, for DNA personnel. There are two included in the budget, and the sheriff has come up with recommended $86,000 that they can generate in revenue. There's also an increase in commodities, contractual services, and capital outlay that is included, these are increases, and again, in the cost of doing business. That amount is $626,900. The next slide there, these are the things that were requested that were not included. I'd ask the sheriff to make any comments, if he wishes to, on those, or if there's any questions, I can answer those, but I'm not going to go through all of them.
Okay, can we go back to the previous slide? Sheriff, I don't know whether you were here, Steve Howe was here earlier on his budget and spoke, I think, quite effectively to the need for additional crime lab personnel, and he was very, very supportive of the two DNA folks that are currently in the budget. And I want to talk a little bit about your first request for the seven task force, and we've had this conversation, so, you know, it's, the recommendation is for three, and we've talked about the possibility that two existing personnel might be repositioned, but also the need for a supervisor position for that group of five. And I'm certainly supportive of that and am going to include that on my RAR revisit list. You know, the other thing I would say, I think that activity is extremely important. I think it's also important, and I think you understand this, it sure would be helpful if we could get some support from other police agencies, and for whatever reason, you know, I'm willing to help in that effort if I can make a positive contribution to that effort.
Mr. Chairman, how about your checkbook?
Pardon? No. My credit card.
You're offering the help, I was just wondering if you're.
My credit card's maxed out. So, you know, there's several moving parts, I'll put it this way. Our high schools have SRO officers, which they have one level of activity, but I think they can be helpful in this effort, not in the arrests, you know, those kind of. the arrest, you know, those kind of things, but, uh, 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 providing information as to what's going on, uh, you know, within, within the school population. And, uh, so, uh, I think there's great potential here. And quite frankly, uh, if, if we could come to agreement with three plus two plus one, uh, I think that gives us a good, uh, a good start to, uh, to put the program together. So, uh, that's, that's my thoughts at this point.
And I appreciate your, your support, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, we went through the budget cut process this year with, with Penny and all the department heads, and, and they are in difficult situations, and we, we tried to cut as much as we could. We didn't get a lot of our positions funded. Um, and, and I understand that. We're not the only, uh, public safety entity here in Johnson County. So I, I appreciate you working with us. Thank you, sir.
Glad to, glad to. Other questions? Mr. Ostras?
Hey, Cal, um, can you talk a little bit about the backlog on the DNA? I know we're doing some on behalf of the state, and that's kind of, we're getting some funding for that. Are we fully recouping from the state, or?
Um, no, not, really not. Um, and, and what's really gonna hurt the backlog, uh, at the crime lab is this new SACI law, where all of the existing DNA cases that have been held, and not every DNA test gets, gets tested, and, and they put them on the backside. If you got somebody that, that confesses to the crime, or they've got an eyewitness account, they usually don't do that testing, because it's not necessary. Well, there's a new law that comes, that's come out that says we have to test all of those. So there's gonna be considerably, a considerable backlog, and that's what Steve's referring to, um, that we've got to start getting this backlog caught up. Um, these DNA, um, positions will be critical for that. Um, the sooner we get on top of that, the better. And with the growth in the county, crimes are up, prosecutions are up, they're gonna be more than busy.
Well, I hate to sound like a broken record, but maybe this is another thing we can add or emphasize in our legislative platform for, you know, funding for these, especially since, I think Steve has mentioned before that we do a backlog on behalf of the state for the KBI, I believe. So, you know, properly funding, I know we're asking a lot, but, you know, if we don't ask, we're definitely not getting, so.
Yeah, very true, very true. Mr. Ashcraft?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sheriff, I've asked this question of, um, the DA and a couple of others. You, you made mention about the ADP, average daily-
Population.
Population, thank you. And since fourteen, I would be interested in understanding what it has been, what the trend has been long-term, say, over the last ten years, and staffing, 'cause that's been an issue that we've talked about, and we, we don't have to get into the details, but sometime in the next couple of weeks, uh, to get a, uh, better understanding of that. And a couple of things that have come up, and, um, I, you, you just mentioned it, talking about the cost of services going up, and it is, and whether we like it or not, it's a reality for all of us. Um, and it was Tuesday morning, uh, you did an excellent presentation to the, or like the chamber group, and one of the things that you talked about was, um, your, um, attempts to, um, recoup county costs when you interact with other agencies, um, counties, and so forth, and, and I commend that. We've also talked about doing some kind of annual review for, uh, charges and fees, and, um, countywide. One thing that has been, uh, an issue that we've discussed on and off are the jail costs that we charge, um, cities. And I'm not suggesting overnight boom, but to look at that, uh, more systematically annually, because, uh, the rates are, some say the rates are pretty good for the cities, and I, I'm not trying to penalize the cities, but, um, as our costs go up, uh, it's driven by some measure, uh, by those cities, and to recognize that shared responsibility. So i- is that something that you have considered or would consider?
Absolutely. You know, I think, we, we just had this talk this morning-
Okay.
About, um, even our school, with, working with our school districts. We have different fees for different school districts, uh, when we provide SRO services. Now, that needs to be pretty uniform. It should be across the board. It should be a standard fee for whatever we do. Um, we haven't raised, uh, or looked at those costs for the cities for a long time. Now, there's a couple of schools that thought on it. You know, the cities, they're, you know, um, they're getting taxed, too, and, uh, so it's kind of, uh, how do we, do we really wanna go down that road? But it's worth looking at, because our costs are increasing, and I think it's only fair that at some point we have to look at that, that break-even point and say, "Look, we, we've got to pass some of this along."
And Sheriff, that's a fair observation, and there's a balance there. One argument that I always have struggled with is, if we keep the cost artificially low, then there may not be the same incentive for those departments to think critically about their decision points on to whether or not to put someone in jail. Um, and because, well, it's just cheaper and easier just to dump it on the sheriff and run, and that sounds horrible, but-
Yeah, I don't think that's happening, but it's-
No, yeah, I'm, I'm overstating that, but, but having that kind of, uh, cost point and realization that, well, the decisions we make in the field do have consequences, and do we have a responsibility, or can we just literally say, "Well, um, that's out of our, our concern now, because the sheriff has the problem"? So-
Sure, sure. And I, I think it's, those are good conversations to have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I would, I would simply add this. I don't, I don't know that anybody's ever said it's the sheriff's problem, so, but, uh, in years past, with another hat on, when these discussions came up, uh, the, always looked at the amount of property taxes that were collected within a specific jurisdiction, uh, the amount of sales taxes that were collected, uh, and, uh, those, uh, those revenues were directly as a result of decisions made by those local jurisdictions. So it's not as, it's more cloudy than it might appear. Let me, let me say that. Mr. Allen?
I was gonna have a follow-up comment on your investigative, uh, task force. In Calvin, the other night, there was a, an officer involved shooting in, uh, Lenexa, and an individual ran into three cars. I don't know exactly when, uh, what happened or the, anything about the individual, but on a blog that I was reading, frankly, the comments about drug activity and gang activity in Johnson County did not paint a very good picture. So, uh, I don't know what, who's commenting on there, frankly, if they're all from Johnson County, but there's like fifteen, sixteen comments, and boy, it hit real hard about, in my opinion, increased activity on gang and drugs in Johnson County. So, uh, I, I think, and I'll support what the chairman said, the additional supervisory. I think we need to, to get more serious on this and, uh, let them know that we're out there looking for them, so.
They've, uh, and we've, I'm losing sleep over this, too. Uh, you know, we're dealing, I mean, our, our narcotics arrest on our patrol area, which is just the rural areas, is up about three-hundred percent since the last year. I don't know what's, you know, it used to be, you'd stop somebody, and once in a while, you'd find some dope. It's a nightly occurrence now. It's, uh, it's really, uh, an, an issue that we need to, to get on top of.
I'd point out, too, on the, uh, on slide forty-six, on the trends and measures, the bottom right-hand corner is the number of methamphetamine cases in Johnson County. Those have nearly doubled over the last five years, from around two-hundred to nearly four-hundred.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shaffer, did you-
Part of my question, jumping on Jim, and thank you for your comments there, but on page forty-six, the slide we're, we have, and then I'll ask you to go to forty-two, but I see the sheriff calls for service increase and, uh, population increases. I'm sure that has some effect upon that lower-right chart. But then, if you'd go to, uh, page forty-two, the upper comment there, uh, drugs crimes and increasing due to the meth and the, uh, overall drug population. And I hope, maybe you can explain to me exactly what that means, and what you do, what you do when those calls come in, and how it affects nine-eleven department, the Med Act department, and also the DA, DA's department. Is there a relationship that you've seen, or?
Well, absolutely.
Everything increases, I know, but-
Everything does. And, you know, um, really what we're looking at, guys, is the urbanization of Johnson County. And, you know, the other day, as I was coming to work, I was listening to the radio, and they made the comment that the traffic was more out from Kansas City, Missouri, during rush hour traffic to Johnson County instead of the other way around. It's been many years. And, you know, a- as I heard that, it, it made perfect sense to me, because what's happening is the urbanization of Johnson County and all those problems that come with it. And this is a great place to live, and it's also a great place to hunt if you're a predator. And that's what's happening. You know, uh, you, you go to where, if you, if you're gonna hunt buffalo, you go to where there's the most buffalo, and, and we're very rich in, in, uh, in buffalo right now, or however you wanna look at it. But, and the predators come here looking for easy marks, and they find them. And, uh, I truly wanna send that message, that you come to the wrong place.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, representing the sixth district that the sheriff is very familiar with, having represented it before and living in it, um, forty-five percent of the county, it's, it's a lot of territory. You're the primary law enforcement agency in, in the district and the folks that I represent. Um, to the extent that I can be helpful with the cities where you need assistance, I am more than happy, and I'm here, and you know that. Um, I am incredibly interested in getting in front of this, the drug issue going on right now. And I know that you and I had a conversation, but I wanted to share that and relay some of that, that the, correct me if I'm wrong, the FBI, Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, Memphis Police, and the Shelby County Sheriff's Office in Tennessee are joint together, trying to get in front of this by dealing with shoplifting and petty crime, because that's where the money comes from to buy the drugs. If there's not the money to buy the drugs, the drugs will go away on their own. They'll go away. Um, having dealt with now and watched, uh, a drive-by shooting in Edgerton, two in Aletha earlier this week, and then one in Lenexa earlier this week, it's hard to, it would be, it would be very difficult for anybody to sit here and say that, that this is not a problem on the rise, and I'm looking at the same statistics everyone else is looking at. Everything, every problem we're, that the sheriff's is dealing with, and courts, and everyone, it is, uh, it's, continues to rise. We have got to get in front of it. And, uh, to the extent that there needs to be some other sacrifice somewhere else in this budget, I'm prepared to make that, to get in front of this piece. Our quality of life and what the people that I represent expect in terms of safety and, and security in their lives, driving down the road, shopping, being in their yard, is paramount importance. And I'm prepared to, to step forward and push that as a commissioner. I want to get in front of this. It is important to me that we get in front of it. So I, I just wanted to-
Okay.
-make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ostras?
Calvin, do you have, like, heat maps? Do you know exactly where those areas are? Do you know?
Yes, I do. They're up I-35, basically I-35 corridor.
Okay.
Um, right now, um, the two hotspots in Johnson County as far as, you know, and we're looking at, at, I'm looking at violent crimes. Uh, I, I saw an article this morning in a, in a, in a magazine that said, uh, City of Aletha is the sixteenth safest, safest city in the country. Well, they're using Part I crimes, which is murder, rape, robbery, and ag assault. That's the four crimes they use. Well, they're not, they're not including a lot of Type I crimes that are in there. Um, you know, ag battery, ag assault, um, attempted murder, um, indecent liberties with children, ag assault, uh, ag battery LEO, uh, Part I drug crimes. They're not considered in there. So, you know, statistics can be manipulated in a lot of ways.
Sure.
Um, but what I look at, I've lived here in Johnson County thirty years, and all of you have, too, and I don't think we've experienced the, the, the things that we're hearing. And every night, every, every night, there's a drug incident that goes on. And, uh, I just, I, you know, gentlemen, I can't sit on my hands and say, "This is okay." Um, I'll do everything we can. I've worked with Penny and Maury to do everything we can for, and, within this budget. I understand that, that there are other needs in the county, but my responsibility to you as your sheriff is to keep the citizens of Johnson County safe. And I've laid out what I think is necessary to do that, and you guys are the policymakers.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
Sorry, can I continue?
Yes.
I was just gonna say, I think all of us up here have made a commitment over the years to public safety, and will continue to do so. I just wondered about heat maps, mainly because if it's a certain portion of the county, then I think whichever commissioner that is that represents that area should be a little more involved with the local. You know, like, I have a very good relationship with Chief Donches, and would be happy to, you know, continue those conversations as we try to look for extra resources for this drug task force, so.
And we've got commitments from several of the cities in the county, and they're awaiting, you know, it's always been, uh, especially when we do task forces, it's, it's always, the, the street-level police officers always work great together. We love it. It's when we start getting with the brass that sometimes we get in, in, in trouble. And I don't wanna do that. I've tried to do that, um, to reach out to people the best I can, and I want a great working relationship over, and I've spoken with Frank. He's, he's-
We always have unanimous decisions on this dais.
Well, actually, most of the time.
We understand that, yes, you're right. Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Clicker, are you done?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sheriff, uh, this is, um, as you've described, an important initiative. I would be interested, uh, in the near future, uh, understanding more thoroughly how you will be measuring success on this effort. So if we could do that offline, I would appreciate that. Um, the second thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, to back up on our conversation, I think you raised some valid points, that the cities are the economic engines and contribute to the wealth of this county substantially, if not overwhelmingly. Uh, but I also reflect on the fact that with the Public Safety Sales Tax III, they were beneficiary of some of our efforts, so I, I'm, I'm thinking, um, we, we might have an opportunity to have some discussions there to help with some of these, uh, incidental costs, and I know that may not be to the liking of some cities, but, uh, I, I would hope that we can, can look at the new environment and how we're moving forward, and, um, as the other commissioners have said, uh, I'm glad to help with the, the cities, but as we know, there, there is no crime in Aletha. It's all in Orland Park.
I think, I think Cal just had the stats.
Hot spots.
Sorry, pal.
They're both glowing.
Nice try.
I always, I always look towards the fourth district commissioner in that regard.
Absolutely.
Is it, if there's an epicenter, is it, uh, ninety, are you trying to say ninety-fifth in the optic? I'll help you out.
It's close to both of them.
Here I am with you.
Heard of that place.
All right, any, uh, any other comments, any other questions?
No.
Okay, Sheriff, thank you very much. Good job. Keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
I think Maury wanted to say a couple words just to wrap up public safety, and then we'll have infrastructure.
Thank you, Tom. First is to thank you to all of our public safety providers for being here today and making this presentation to the board. Very much appreciated. Couple of themes that you may have heard today, uh, Board. One was, uh, mental health and the impacts, not only on our health and human services providers that you'll hear a bit about more from in the coming days, but the impact it's having on our public safety providers, too, is, is an issue that we're all very aware of and working to address. To give you a little bit of a look ahead, even though it's not contained in the sheriff's office budget here, the Mental Health Center budget, the proposed, um, budget, does include a co-responder, a mental health co-responder for the sheriff's office, so talk about that as it addresses mental health. And then a related issue that you heard a bit about was Medicaid today, when we talked with Med Act about the amount of uncompensated care. Just a reminder again to this board that that continues to be an issue for us here in, in Johnson County in Kansas, without the expansion of Medicaid, which I know has been a, um, legislative priority of this board the last couple of years at least. We're continued to face with that amount of uncompensated care that's affecting a number of our departments. And finally, specifically as it relates to Medicaid, there's an issue of suspension versus termination, which could have an impact on our cost here in Johnson County. And simply, that's the premise of, once you're incarcerated, if you are a Medicaid recipient and, uh, often being used to provide mental health care, um, your Medicaid benefits are terminated at the time that you are incarcerated. Well, there's an effort going on, and hopefully will be still addressed this legislative session, which would suspend those benefits rather than terminate, meaning, once you come back out, you're again have Medicaid, and you could use that to provide the medical services, and quite frankly, maybe pay for the psychotropic medications for your mental health needs.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, the fact is, if, if, if you get out of car, incarceration, it may take you three months to get qualified again. And by that time, you know, the mental health services that you've received, uh, are dissipated. And if you can't have access to pay for medication, uh, then, uh, all the good work done is, is, is wasted. So hopefully that'll happen. So, hopefully that'll happen. Okay. Infrastructure. How much time we gonna need? I'm questioning whether we need to take a two-minute break or not.
Ms.?
Yeah, I'm good with a break.
All right. We'll take about a two or three-minute break.
We tried holding the button down like two minutes.
Close enough on the wall.
That should shut it off, and then you have to start all over again.
Good job, Cal. Thanks.
Thank you, Calvin. Thanks for the good work. Thanks for all the hiring you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Calvin, did you get those women from Lenexa? Oh, okay.
She did get, she got a message from her.
She sent a message.
She did get, she got a message from her.
She sent a message.
She did get, she got a message from her.
Yeah, she sent me a text and said, "Is that right?" I was like, "Oh." All right, thanks.
Sensational, Mike.
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look, you know, I'm not gonna put it down. They see it, talk about it. I will look into it, because I am curious.
Yeah, I don't know why they wouldn't.
Guys, thank you so much.
I'm not the worst part.
You have a reservation.
That's a good one.
I'm getting high.
I'm gonna make sure to check back.
I will.
Ah, good, we get Mr. Lipstick again. Ha, ha, ha!
That's as good as bad.
Yes. Now that we built him up.
Okay. Infrastructure.
Okay. Before we get to planning, we have a few overview slides, and I didn't mention this earlier, but we did do some pie charts. I think it was Commissioner Clacke wanted to have that look at departments, and so I'm not gonna go through those, but if you do have any questions about that, there's just some departmental numbers to kind of visually give everybody an idea of how these strategic programs break out. But really, what I wanted to do first is go ahead and turn it over to Aaron Otto to kind of do a little bit of an overview on infrastructure before we get into planning.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Scott. Today, we're here to talk about three groups within the infrastructure unit. The other remaining entities with infrastructure will come up later in the month, which is airport commission, transit, and wastewater. But the first is to kind of look at a couple of the accomplishments, and I would say partnerships is one that we definitely want to highlight and point out. We're very fortunate to have good, open lines of communication with our strategic partners, such as the Department of Transportation, and our cities within Johnson County, which will allow for planning, coordination, road maintenance, and improvements. We are hearing some concerns about certain state-supported roads, such as I-35 and the Seventy-Fifth Street Exchange and the exit on-ramps there. We hope the legislature adopts the bill that you heard Cindy Green talk about earlier today, which would set up a new task force to work on a new ten-year transportation plan in the future, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and keep a look forward to that. Another item that's moving along is the development patterns. This is a case where Johnson County government has done a great job over the last couple of years, providing stable funding to ensure that we are doing road maintenance and other infrastructure, so that we can continue to do that preventative maintenance, which keeps the overall cost during the service life of the roads down because of that stable, consistent funding. So, Public Works continues to do a good job prioritizing county roads that are in need of improvements and looking at other safety factors. The third is the stormwater strategic plan. You've heard that during a study session. I mean, this is a game-changing activity that's partway down the pipe. We'll be working on the first major redesign of this program in decades. This is a detailed shift to watershed basis, like you heard during the study session, and we're currently working with the city partners on the details of the plan. That will be coming back to you later this year to be implemented and put in effect for next year. But the cities have been great partners to work with on the stormwater strategic plan. The other is the planning process and review. This will be highlighted, I'm sure, by Jay in more detail shortly, but this incorporates over the last few months, the progress that I think, as you will hear and see in the future, this overall is gonna be no longer business-as-usual going forward. And the last area is the contractor's licensing strategic plan. I think that's an exciting opportunity, where there'll be an opportunity to look for additional ways to improve this quality program by adding additional training opportunities for contractors in the future. And with that, I'll turn it back, and we'll take them up bit by bit.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Gail Kaufman with Budget Office, and Jay Lipstick with Planning and Contractor Licensing. Jay is gonna first do an overview, and then hit on some key points for them.
Good afternoon, members of the, Chairman, members of the board.
Hold the microphone closer, Jay.
I'm sorry. There you go. Talk to you a little bit about planning, contractor licensing. As a new director coming in, my primary focus really has been on ensuring coordinated, efficient land use decisions, and really looking at our processes to ensure that those are as streamlined as we possibly can, to ensure that it's balanced, also that we have consistent decision-making. I think in the past, sometimes we've had decisions where staff has made a recommendation, the zoning board has recommended denial, for example, and then the Board of County Commissioners will, will, will either be consistent with it with staff or consistent with the zoning board, and there, there's a lot of inconsistency there in terms of our recommendations. So, staff and the planning team is really working on that. That will be one of our primary focuses this next year. Also, looking at efficient delivery of services in terms of building inspection, and our process review through our new software implementation and working on that. Also, the work of our planning subcommittee group, which has been fantastic thus far, and they've really done a terrific job of determining where the issues are within our subdivision regulations, making those changes and those adjustments, so that we can come back and come forward with those consistent decisions for you. The other item is under contractor licensing, working with that group. As Aaron said, it's a fantastic program. It's really a national model that we can look at throughout the country of effective educational tool. One of the things we'd like to do is look at getting a consultant onboard to look at a strategic initiatives plan in the future, so that we can identify what those-
A strategic what?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
A strategic what?
Strategic initiatives plan for the future.
Initiatives. Okay.
Trying to determine what those future educational opportunities might be. Right now, we focus on the traditional trades, such as electricity, HVAC systems, building, basically codes, but there are other opportunities out there that I think through either planning process and through a national consultant, we can help identify what those might be. Also, determine the best format for learning. Right now, they're all classroom-based sessions, and really, in most universities and trade schools are going to either a hybrid format, which is a combination of both internet-based learning, as well as classroom learning, or some kind of interactive learning. Many museums are now using an interactive concept for, to convey the ideas in those exhibits. So, this, the board really thought, they wanted to look at this initiative, to figure out what those future opportunities might be, and the best way to implement them.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go on to the budget slides. Planning and contractor licensing have two separate budgets, so these two slides are for planning. The budget is relatively flat at 1.58 million for nineteen. The FTEs will go down just a little bit, and that's mostly because of, in eighteen, you approved .25 FTE to take a .75 to full-time, but that never transpired. So, the, I'm assuming the individual never wanted to go full-time, so now it's, we took it back out. So, it went back to the previous. And then there are some small adjustments between some of the management, how we charge the contractor licensing. So, that's the changes in the FTEs there. For contractor licensing, it is a hundred percent supported with fees, so there is no tax support, and it is 1.36 million for nineteen for the budget. The FTEs, they go up just slightly to 5.35. Again, on that one was just adjusting some on-call positions. The dollars were in there, they just weren't in there at the right amount, so no dollars changed on that. And then the proposed changes to the budget, in their budget, they did provide a $40,000 reduction from their budget, and that was mostly from, they had some temporary labor that they had been utilizing or planned to utilize to scan and digitize documents, and beginning in nineteen, they don't believe that that'll be the case anymore, so they were able to reduce their budget by 40,000. And then contractor licensing had requested using 100,000 of their reserves, or bank, as a lot of people call it, for this contractor licensing education strategic plan that Jay had mentioned. So, we've got that listed in their budget. I will tell you that as of the end of April, their, again, bank is what we call it, reserves were at 347,000. So, it's got sufficient funds for that 100,000 to come to promote this strategic plan. With that all.
Well, the contractor licensing is self-funding, right?
Yes.
So, all of these dollars would be generated by, by those fees.
Right. And it's extra fees that they've had that we've put into reserves-
Right.
-over years.
All right. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lipstick, I would be interested in learning more about your strategic planning effort. That's, that stuff excites me. I think it's the right thing to do in terms of long-term progress, so I commend you for that, or whoever was behind it. I mean, good for you. Remind me, is this your first budget with us?
This is my first budget with you.
That's what I thought.
It is, so give him a break today.
Well, I'm gonna take this opportunity to give him a break, because I'd like you, I'd like you, yes, I'd like you to give me some perspective on the plan. Hold it up, hold it up, hold it up. On planning. How, how do we measure success on that? Hold it up, hold it up so the TV viewing audience can see it. So, how do you see that? Because I think it relates directly to your strategic planning thoughts.
Yes, it does, which I appreciate the chance to answer that. Basically, the, in planning, we would measure success by looking at consistent decision-making.
Consistent what?
Consistent decision-making.
Okay.
For some reason, I have a hard time with those two words together. But in other words, where staff recommends approval, the zoning board recommends approval, and the Board of County Commissioners recommend approval. Where it gets confusing to not only, to the zoning board and to the Board of County Commissioners is when staff recommends approval on something, zoning board denies it, and then, then of course, the board will deny it, or they might approve it. It's just very, it's been inconsistent across the board, so I think we're really going to work on consistent decision-making, and the way that we're going to do that is through our plan review process. And I think by meeting with developers and applicants early through the process, you can get more, basically, staff gets a better idea of the project, how we can, how we can take projects and make them fit within our subdivision regulations, work with them really to get a better product.
Okay.
So, that's the first thing in terms of tools for success, for measures of success. The other one would be on plan review. And, you know, we have, we've made great efforts to expedite our plan review process within five days for small projects, but for larger projects, if we can get that to fourteen days, would be ideal. And that would be through this development review committee process, the applicant submitting documents, having a full, complete application with everything that we need at that time, and then completing our plan review along with our comments. And, and so we get, we get better applications, we get, the plan review is more complete, and that will help, that hopefully will expedite that process as well.
Very good. Well, I hope you also can include stakeholder satisfaction and engagement, and if you haven't talked to Susan Myers, she's, she's a good resource. Because I was looking at some of your measures, and I think you're going to address this, but there's one in here that says public inquiries, 2,600 actual, estimated, and estimated. And I look at that, and I go, well, so, should that, is it better if it's up or down? Or, I mean, how, what's, what's good about that? And we don't need to get into an explanation, but I look at those measures, and I just like, I don't know what they mean and how we should react. And while you're not asking for resources or personnel resources, I suspect, because your reputation is growing, that you want to excel at what you do, and I think you will do that. So, I just hope you can be more thoughtful in how you present that. Now, one detailed question, if I could. Building permits issued under seventeen actual, you list City of Mission and unincorporated Johnson County, but in eighteen and nineteen, there are neither. So, is Mission no longer a participant?
That is correct. We were helping them through their inspection process.
Okay, okay.
In that.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate your optimism, and you're doing a good job. But if you reach the level of constant consistency in land use and zoning issues, I want to co-author the book with you, because we can sell that book and do tours, speaking tours, and not have to worry about retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Yeah, it's a, it's a great goal to have- Yeah, it's a great goal to have. I know that we will have some controversial issues in the future, I'm sure of it.
No, no, you're welcome.
I will do my best to at least work with applicants as much as we can.
I understand, yeah. Very good. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got Public Works next, so we'll get those folks up. Dave Rodney is the analyst, and of course, Brian Peating is the director, so I'll turn it over to them now.
Dave Rodney with the Budget Department. I'm going to turn it over to Brian. He's going to cover the first couple of slides here, and then I'll cover a few budget slides and we'll open up for questions.
Good afternoon, Brian Peating with Public Works. Our mission statement, our Public Works department's unique in that a lot of Public Works departments have many activities they undertake: wastewater, parks, transit, trash lot. And we are just the roads and bridges and just in the unincorporated area of Johnson County. That is pretty unique for a Public Works department, so when you see our mission statement, we talk primarily, and for those reasons, about the roads and the bridges and planning and developing it. The sentence that is impactful to me is the very last one, which was, we added, "We will continue to educate employees, management elected officials, and the public of the importance of public work." So, the opportunity today here to talk about our budget, what we do, why we do it, how much we need to do these things is very important, and that's part of our mission, is make sure we're explaining to folks what it is we do. So, thank you for that opportunity. Key points: we need to keep up with our road overlays before and maintenance. Our biggest asset that we have, or there's two big assets we have, and those are our bridges and our asphalt roads. And for, one of the first things that we talked about when I became the county engineer about three, four years ago was the importance of keeping up with timely maintenance, in that it's the frame filter saying, "Pay me now or pay me later." It's five to six times more expensive to totally reconstruct roads. So, that, our first key point, and we have been very grateful, we've had an RER for the last four years of a million dollars, and that's to fund our overlays, fully fund those, keep those roads in good shape. Need to maintain good working condition of our gravel roads. And just like the paved roads, we need to keep rock on those. It's, that's not as imperative. Gravel roads, their condition fluctuates greatly through the year, and that's just a natural part of what gravel roads are, but we don't want them to turn to mud. And that's when they, we have issues with the rock. It's hard to believe, but that, your car's driving over it, grinding that aggregate is what creates the dust, and that aggregate does disappear about a half inch a year. And over four years, we need to put another layer of rock on there, so funding that's important. Important to maintain good working condition of our bridges and culverts. And there's some performance measures that we can look at, but somebody 35, 40 years ago decided to start funding, and you've heard about the issue with bridges in the rural areas and what bad shape they are, and that's not here at Johnson County.
So, you can measure success?
I don't know if you'll agree with my measures, but yes, we have measures. And that funding for those bridges has put us in a great shape. We are now putting a lot of that money and resource into our asphalt roads and getting those shoulders on there, getting the roadside obstacles, making a safer way there, and improving the road quality, capacity, and safety through our road system enhancements. And you heard Aaron mention the unique developments that are occurring. We're having patterns of development that are out in the rural area, the NSF, and that's creating strains on the county's rural infrastructure, the Overland Park annexation area. We knew that would happen. 183rd Street, you saw us recently complete. So, those are four key points that are worth mentioning here this afternoon.
Good. Questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we'll quickly go through these budget slides here. As you can see, there's an increase of about a million dollars in total expenditures once you take out cost allocation and risk management charges between '18 and '19. I would point out that about 750,000 of that is related to increases in the CARS program, which is a formula-based program. We take gas tax receipts and mix that with .343 mils, and so, that amount's going from roughly 14.97 million to 15.91 million for 2019. So, that's a large part of what's going up there. The other thing that's increasing is mainly personnel dollars for that. As you can see, budgeted FTEs go down slightly. It's a .26 decrease. What we did is we took some part-time positions, several of them, and made into a full-time position, as we felt like that was better to meet some of our needs out of Public Works. As for the proposed changes, we're doing a million dollars in overlays. That comes out of CARS bank or program reserves, and that's actually on the next slide. Fleet capital replacement, we're putting 685,000 in addition to what's in the base for that. That would bring the replacement cycle cost to roughly about a million dollars annually. The current fleet's estimated at about 11.6 million, so that's about 8.6% roughly, or about a 12, 11 and a half to 12-year replacement cycle on fleet. The bridge roads culvert program's staying at 2 million, and that keeps that life expectancy of our bridges at that 50-year mark that Brian had mentioned. Again, CARS is proposed at 15.9 million for 2019. This is just that slide that shows the million dollars that's going out of the CARS program reserve to help with our overlay request, and then we have 1.1 million in Public Works fund reserves programmed in, 685 for fleet replacement, 350 to help fund operations and maintenance budget, and then 100,000 to keep that Bridges, Roads, and Culverts program at 2 million. As for trends and measures, we're just kind of showing that we're doing a real good job, we think, of addressing the asphalt road maintenance and keeping that schedule current and kind of staying on top of that. As you can see, we've been able to, and I think part of this is due to material costs being in our favor the last few years, but we're able to meet and, in some cases, a little bit exceed what we think we can do on a percentage basis. And our percent of asphalt need improvement has gone down a little bit here the last few years, so that's good, I think. As for that, I'll go ahead and turn it over. Any questions you might have budgetarily or programmatically?
Mr. Clark.
What I'd like to see, I'm not prepared to do anything, at least relative to this budget, but in the discussion with CARS and the funding for various asphalt overlays, we're changing, going from gravel to whatever. Obviously, the 3rd and 6th District have a lot of unfinished improvements there, and there seems to be a growing need, at least as we move out, of what's needed and the improvements that need to be taken care of. Brian, could you just put together a small little task force that includes Commissioner Brown, myself, and a couple other folks, maybe map out, if not for this year, but as we go into next year's budget and so forth, that we may start taking a look at putting into, whether it's a capital improvement program or whatever, at least a set of dollars that allows us to start moving forward on those, on some of those projects as they need to move up in priority and as the citizens demand that. So, if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Is that okay, Commissioner?
Please.
Okay.
And just to be clear, specifically gravel roads is the?
Going from gravel to asphalt.
Okay. Will do.
Any other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clark, you may be asking what I was going to ask, so if this is repeating, I'm not sure.
Do you know what gravel roads are?
I'm not sure. I understand.
On his district.
Is it in?
I know what rocks are in your head, if that's what you're saying.
It's getting late.
It is, it is. The question.
Happy hour, where's happy hour?
The question on overlays as a million, I was going to ask, is that enough from your perspective professionally? Is that what you're getting at, Mr. Clark? Is a million dollars enough?
Yeah, we need to, that's the question, whether a million dollars or, well, it's not just the overlay. We're going from gravel to asphalt.
Right, right.
There's overlays that are in maintenance, preventative maintenance practice.
Right.
And that's putting additional asphalt on existing asphalt. And then there's the issue, and these two Commissioners are painfully aware of, folks hate gravel roads. In the spring and fall, they're wet and muddy; in the summer, they're very, very dusty; and in the winter, we can't plow them very well. So, nobody is happy on a gravel road ever, and to have something where you have funds, and they're low volume, and they don't warrant typically an improvement. But, to, the satisfaction of the residents that live on gravel roads is very poor.
Okay. Well, that was my question, and then also the CARS program and its funding level. What should be our level? Should it be, should we be funding it at this level, or higher, or lower? I mean, in terms of overall needs of the community. And then related to your trends and measures, percent of asphalt roads in need of improvement, you're hovering between 53% and 56% over the last several years. What is the benchmark? What should we be shooting for? Or have, is this the right benchmark? About 50%? Or should we shoot for 40% or 5%? I mean, what?
I think that's a question we need to kind of wrestle with.
Well, yeah, you know, let's talk about gravel roads. If you've got three miles of gravel roads and one structure on three miles of gravel road versus another three miles where you might have 10 structures, you know, fairly easy to prioritize. So, I think those are, that's all information that needs to be evaluated when you look at the priorities, whether it's maintenance or moving up from gravel to asphalt.
And I agree, Mr. Chairman, but the way it's written here is "percent of asphalt roads in need of improvement."
Those are existing roads.
Well, those are existing roads, which you can identify.
Yes.
Yeah.
Have edge drop-off issues, obstacles.
But what should, I mean, your measures, I'm just like, should I be happy or sad, or is it, is it okay the way it is? I mean, I mean, why is this here?
There will, be careful what I say here. There is never enough resource for many, many county activities. And so, if that's the question, there will never be enough resources for many, many county activities. So, again, it's a matter of prioritizing, which has been suggested, and I think that's one measurement of success.
Hold up the sign, he said it.
I was just reading what.
Oh, there we are.
Matrix.
What? I can't read it.
Matrix.
Oh, matrix, okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll move to stormwater here, and I'll ask my new boss, Lee Kellenberger, to come up and join us. Lee's going to go through the first.
He's certainly the best staff he's ever had.
First few slides here on stormwater.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, I was asked to speak a little bit about the stormwater management program, just a high-level overview, and speak to kind of the measures of our success. As you know or are well familiar, we recently completed a new strategic plan, and ultimate success of our program really is reflected in our new vision and mission statement shown here. The key things there being, you know, protecting human lives and property, modernizing infrastructure, improving water quality, conserving natural resources and so forth. So, we realize that, you know, there, we're in a state of transition right now, and as we work to implement those recommendations on our strategic plan, we think that there'll be opportunities to put in more tangible performance measures as we move forward in the next few years. So, on to the next slide. Stormwater key points, I guess, it's easier to summarize what isn't changing than what is changing, so I guess the things that aren't changing, they're staying the same, is really the funding source for this program, which is the 10th of a cent retail sales tax that this Board approved back in 1990. And then also the proposed budget for 2019. We don't really have our policies and procedures in place yet to change the way we're allocating our funding for 2019, so the budget we'll be bringing forward to you is going to be relatively the same, but we hope that as we move forward with implementation, we will be prepared to start changing our funding allocations for our 2020 budget. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Dave.
But again, these activities are funded within the 10th of a cent stormwater tax, so.
Correct.
There's no general funds that come into that operation.
Correct.
Which is really an excellent segue into the next slide here, which shows that for 2019, we're projecting 16.29 in expenditures, which is, we're showing, completely offset by local tax support of 16.29, which is that sales tax. So, with that, the FTEs are remaining stable at 2.75, and we'll go the other direction there. The 15-point, almost 8 million going to the CIP, which includes a half million dollars out of stormwater reserves to put it at that number. So, their reserves are at a healthy level. We felt comfortable putting that half million in towards the program. So, with that, I'll turn it over for any additional questions you might have regarding stormwater.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to remind folks that we will be meeting again next week at 1 o'clock, and you can see that we'll be bringing in a lot of the outside folks that we provide funding to, so the list is there, followed by Health and Human Services. So, with that, if there's no further questions, we will see you, at least budget-wise, next week, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Newfeld and his staff. The way you've presented and packaged the material, it's a change and it's a big improvement. It has made it much easier to organize and to review along with you. In years past, it's kind of been each department, and yeah, I'm trying to keep track of it. So, whoever came up with this, I will commend your leadership, but thank them and thank your staff for doing that. It's actually made it much easier for me personally. Thank you. Well, yeah, that's, Robin is the champion of the flow on those things, so I do not want to take credit there. I also want to say that Penny really asked us to try to keep each day as tight thematically as we could, and we had good luck. For instance, both the sheriff and the district attorney were available today and those sorts of things. So, we're trying to make it a little less scattery, and that was the direction we had from Penny, and it's, I think that's helped as well. So, I do want to thank both Robin and Penny for those efforts, and my folks did do an awful lot of work putting the PowerPoint together, but I thought it did help than going into this book and bouncing around so much. So, I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Very quickly, before we adjourn, we announced earlier in the day that there's a voter canvas Monday at 9 o'clock. We're adding one other activity to that. The election officer is prepared to demonstrate to us the new voting machines. So, while we're at the election office, either while they're counting ballots or shortly thereafter, he will demonstrate the new election machines, which we will be considering in a couple of weeks. So, there will be a study session, I'll call it that, for the new election equipment, and so, that notice will go out, and again, it'll be following the voter canvas.
Chairman, I know there's a Commissioner or two that cannot make the canvassing, so if there's a Commissioner that would like to see that, that can't make the study session, we'll make it available through Ronnie's office for you at a later time. Great.
Okay. So, I think it's, I think it would be beneficial for all of us to view the equipment kind of hands-on before the proposal comes to us on paper, so. All right, well, thank you all very much. We are adjourned. Have a nice weekend.